Okay, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council for November 4th to order. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let me start out by pointing out Andy Hunter is out of town on business and won't be joining us tonight. It looks like everybody else is here. By way of announcements. Our upcoming Town Council meetings are Thursday, November 18th, December 2nd, and December 16th. All regular meetings here in this room. Paul, did you have any other announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to mention that the Merrimack's Halloween Party and Fireworks Display at Wasserman Park has been rescheduled for this coming Saturday, November 6th. Games and activities will be held from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., followed by a special holiday concert in the park from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., which will lead us into the fireworks display. If, for questions, please contact Parks and Rec Director or the Parks and Rec Office. That's (603) 882-1046. This is the culmination of the 275th celebration. And as everybody knows, on October 30th, we got some heavy rains, so we made the decision to postpone it till this Saturday, the 6th. Supervisors, check set, checklist will be holding a voter registration session on Tuesday, November 9th, from 6:30 to 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. This session is being held to make corrections, additions, and deletions from the checklist. You can also change your party affiliation at that time. Members of the New Hampshire Society of Sons of the American Revolution will be holding an event Sunday, November 7th, at 1:00 p.m. at Matthew Thornton Cemetery located at 303 Daniel Webster Highway. The event is to pay tribute to the signer of the Declaration of Independence, Matthew Thornton, and his spouse Hannah Jack. Many members of all ages will be in revolutionary war attire, including their color guard. And this is what we've been told is the 250th anniversary of Matthew Thornton signing the Declaration of Independence. So that is why they're laying a wreath at his grave. That is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, and I am remiss in pointing out the Town Offices will be closed on Thursday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. To the members of our military, past and present, we thank you for your service.
Okay. One more thing, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
The Legion will be holding a meal for all veterans that would like to go. For more details, you can call the Legion. But I believe it's Sunday night, they'll be holding a special meal for veterans. And if you're not a veteran or a spouse, there's also, it's a price for, nominal fee to cover the cost.
Okay, great. Okay, that brings us to comments from the press and public. If you have comments on agenda items, feel free to come up and speak at this time. There is another time period at the end for comments if you don't, if you want to make other comments, other than agenda items. Seeing nobody racing to the mic, we'll move on to recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We have a recognition for full-time years of service of Town Employees. The Town to present a recognition award to the following employee. Fire and Rescue Department Assistant Chief Sean Brektel. A 20-year plaque, which I don't have.
Actually, Assistant Chief Brektel took his plaque already, but we're just honoring him. The wording of the plaque is in your packet.
Oh, okay. It is?
Yeah.
I got it. So it's a 20-year service award presented to Assistant Fire Chief Sean P. Brektel. In recognition of 20 years of service as a full-time employee of the Town of Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department. It is a pleasure to present you with this plaque. We wish to extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance and dedication to duty from October 29th of 2001 until October 29th of 2021. Presented on behalf of the Town Council and the Town Manager. So Sean, I just want to say thank you, and we appreciate your time.
Quick thing is Sean came to the department as a paramedic and a firefighter in 2001. Became a master firefighter in 2006. Worked very hard and became a lieutenant in 2014. Became captain four years later, in 2018. And performed as Assistant Chief duties during the pandemic and worked with us and the chief and so forth, and myself, in 2020. And became promoted as Assistant Chief in 2021. Sean is also the Chief Operations Officer of the department. Has done a tremendous job since he's been there. He's helped me and the chief throughout a lot of trying times, and he's doing a great job. Want to thank you very much for me and the guys. Thank you.
Again, thanks, Sean.
I was just saying, 20 years flew by.
Yeah, it does fly by. Can't believe I've been here as long as I have. Next, under appointments, the Fire Chief position, a confirmation submitted by Town Manager Paul McCauley. Town Council shall consider the confirmation of the appointment of a new Fire Chief pursuant to Charter Article 7-8.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you know, our last chief, Chief Duke, retired. And at that time, we started a search. We used a search company, MRI, Menosur Resource Incorporated, to do a search for our Fire Chief. They went out nationally, and we received 10 applications for the Fire Chief position. They had interview, they conducted the initial interviews. From the 10 applicants, they weeded it down to four to come in to do an all-day assessment at Town Hall. The Assessment Center did things like fire, safety, personnel-related, tabletop exercises. Very, very interesting and very intense, six-hour to eight-hour that these fire, the candidates were put through. After that Assessment Center, two names were brought forward to me. And one of the names is the gentleman that I'm bringing forward to the Town Council right now. Mark DeFranzo, hope I said that right. He comes to us with nine years' experience of being a chief in Massachusetts. He was last in Upton, Mass. for three years as chief. He's worked his way all the way up from being a call EMS to even on a call fire department when he was in college. Was the president of their club, so to speak, but there was the call department. He was the chief of the call department when he was in college. Worked his way up the ranks from that, got his paramedics license during his time as being an EMS. And comes to us with rave reviews. All his previous employers have said the same thing about Mark. He's very professional. He does a great job. He's very information-driven, and he'll get you the information you need. So I'm presenting Mark to the Town Council to be the next Fire Chief of the Town of Merrimack.
Very good. Do we have any thoughts, comments, or questions? Or a motion?
We just had the opportunity when Paul brought him to us, so we could have questions answered and so on. I was impressed with, with everything that I had heard from Mark that evening. I was happy to see that, you know, I think the department would be picked up and carried on in a good fashion, and I'm looking forward to it.
I agree with that. Any other comments? We need to confirm Paul's choice. So I guess we need a motion to affirm or confirm the choice from Mark DeFranzo. Nancy?
Yep, I just, looking at Mark DeFranzo, so I should put the name in. It's not written down here. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to confirm the appointment of the new Fire Chief, Mark DeFranzo.
Motion made by Nancy, seconded by Finley. Are there any other comments? I was very impressed with the interview we had with Mark. I think he did a very good job explaining his history, as Paul summarized in a very short term. It took him a little bit longer to go through some of that history, but he definitely has a lot of experience working fire departments, EMSs, everything else. And so I think he'd be a tremendous asset to this town. If there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? So that passes 600. As I said, Andy Hunter is out today. No, Paul's going to present him with a badge. It'll be sworn in Monday.
Sir, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm honored to present you with the Fire Chief Badge of the Merrimack Fire and Rescue for the Town of Merrimack. I look forward to working with you, as well as I'm sure all the guys are. And like the Council said, we're very happy to have you. And would forward to you starting Monday, bright and early.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank again all of you for considering me to be your next Fire Chief. I'm privileged and honored to be selected, and I'm humbled that you think I'm going to do a great job, so. Lot of work always needs to happen, so I'm excited to jump in and start making it happen. From what I've heard, we've got a great bunch of good guys and girls, so I'm excited to get going and see what we can do. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is an appointment with the Zoning Board of Adjustment for annual review for the Town of Merrimack Charter, Section 6-6. At least annually, there should be an annual review of the zoning board of adjustments. This agenda item is to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions. If there is any concerns, the council should know or read at home.
Alright, good evening. So in terms of the Zoning Board of Adjustments, we have seen kind of an uptick in a need for housing, and there seem to be a lot of petitioners that are coming forward, looking to, well, for one case, the premium outlets. Yeah. So one of the, I think, more hot-button issues we dealt with was the premium outlets coming forward, and they wanted to reduce the amount of business that they had and increase the amount of apartments that they were building. And they're not the only ones who've come forward with things like this. We had Brady Sullivan in here just last month, looking to convert one of their retail, maybe not retail, but commercial spaces into residential housing, to apartments. So that seems to be something that's starting to trend. In terms of the rest of our cases, they usually are small things, like building a garage on a property that doesn't really suit a garage according to our ordinances. One thing that's kind of peculiar is we had four administrative appeals, which is kind of high for a year for us. And I believe, if not all four, three of them did not come forward with a variance for their administrative appeal. A lot of times petitioners will bring a variance with them in case, you know, we deem it that the, that the appeal is not valid. And the large majority of the time, we do not feel that appeals are valid because, I mean, we're a bunch of volunteers, and we have a community development office that spends countless hours working on this. So more often than not, they do a very good job of requesting petitioners to also consider a variance. But at the same time, I'm actually really surprised at the fact that at least three of these four appeals did not want to pursue a variance. One of which was an attorney that really wanted to set a precedence, and, you know, that's the one thing we don't want to do. But other than that, it was actually a pretty smooth sailing year.
Okay, you said the premium outlets was putting up more apartments, not the premium outlets?
So the, there's a parcel next to the premium outlets that's being developed right now in Merrimack. And the original plan was to have it about 50/50, 50% commercial, 50% housing. And they increased the amount of housing and reduced the amount of commercial. One of the biggest pieces to that, I believe, is that through the pandemic, there've been stores closing in the premium outlets. The need for commercial space isn't as big as it used to be. Especially with a lot of people, I think, doing most of their shopping online now because of the pandemic, so. There just isn't as much of a need for commercial space.
Thanks, Rich. I appreciate you coming this evening. Everybody notices, of course, all the apartments that are going up. And I recognize to a pretty good degree the need for it and what's happening. And, but I'm hoping that the zoning board remains cognizant of the amount of commercial industrial space we do have. And if there should be zoning changes in order to accommodate that, I'd rather that be a zoning change than gone, you know, going through variance processes and so on. And, you know, so that's just my thoughts on it. I just, you know, I know we've been changing things around, and I just, if we should as a town have a zoning change, that I think should be brought forward so that we can do it. And the entire town could be embracing that whole thought, but just my thoughts.
No, agreed. I think that, I think that especially when it comes to apartment housing, ordinances appear a little bit more strict than they would with residential homes. And times are changing, so. We need the housing, certainly, and I think one of the issues is with the commercial space that we do have. Repurposing is kind of difficult for some, so.
Sure.
We also have to be concerned about the infrastructure that has to come along with that extra housing, though.
Of course.
Can't just keep adding lots of housing without being able to support it. Nancy, did you have something?
Yes. Two key things that you said, precedence and trending.
Yes.
And I think they do work together. We all know that the pandemic has created situations, like you mentioned, not commercial. But I think it's premature to be able to think that it's going to be stayed that way. It may, it may not. So I think the trending, we have to be really careful with. And most careful with precedents, because decisions you make now will have precedence for other things in the future. That's all I'm suggesting.
Oh, you're right.
Is that I would rather have you err on the side of being conservative and thinking that it may not be a great idea to set a precedence. That's all, again, it's a comment, because whatever decisions you make, you're based, you have your own rules. But I know that there's a certain amount of subjective interpretation as well. Within the confines of what you have to follow, okay? But when you give waivers, a lot of that is based upon, you have feelings about the interpretation and the impact it's going to have. So all I'm suggesting is that I hope the group takes a very conservative view in terms of what's trending and what might be precedents. That's all.
Oh, absolutely. In our particular case, the only time we actually do anything that sets a precedence is when we approve an appeal of administrative decision. And we really work hard not to approve those. Because more often than not, like I said before, the administrators have done a very good job of being thorough and explaining what needs to be done. And I guess what I find baffling is that in years past, we would always see a variance of some kind accompanying that appeal. But we had, I mean, a few cases, one of which was an attorney trying to specifically set a precedence. And that's just not something we really want to do. There are much better ways to get changes into our ordinances than that.
And zoning is one of those.
Oh, yeah.
If you see something coming down the road where there needs to be a more definitive change, then that's the route to go rather than having the variance. I totally agree with you. That's all, just mine.
Another thing I get a kick out of is, you know, I always think of Society Hill. They had a section at the main entrance that was supposed, you know, supposed to be commercial. And they had things off and on, and they came back 20 years later, said this is kind of a hardship. And that I can recognize, but when somebody purchases a property and then says there's a hardship right away, you maybe brought your own hardship upon yourself.
And you got the original approval based upon criteria of ordinances like the CPU, is that correct? CUP.
CUP.
CUP. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's the point, is that at the present, that's in fact, may in fact be. But will it be, and it's only been a short time, so, to be able to have those considerations, that's all.
Any other comments?
But thank you for the time you do put in. We know it's a lot of work.
Much appreciated.
You guys meet monthly, right?
We do.
And you have a full board at this point, or?
I feel like we always have alternate positions open. And whenever we lose someone from moving or whatever reason, we promote an alternate, so. I believe we have a couple alternate positions open right now.
Okay, so there probably are, there probably are some positions open on the zoning board.
Yes. I haven't, I haven't checked recently. There was actually one time when I showed up to the zoning board and alternate was there. I'm like, wait a minute, shouldn't I have been notified about this? Something slipped through the cracks, I guess.
Okay. Very good. Well, if there's nothing else, and not something special that we can do to help throughout the year, I mean, you have the, the community development staff supports your programming and stuff like that, so.
And they do amazing work.
They do great job. We've, we've heard that many times and experienced it, so. That's good to hear, though, every time we do.
Just, this might be a good opportunity to, and I'm not sure if you've heard yet, but there's going to be a series that the Town Council is hosting. And usually, it's going to be a series on all the committees and the council, on the commissions that we have. And it's basically a citizen education kind of series. And you're going to be contacted, because either Tom Koenig, Paul McCauley, usually it's a Town Councilor who's on the board, but the zoning does not have a Town Council liaison. So you probably have the big guns here. You'll have Tom, or Paul. And so you'll be getting a script, so you don't have to worry about it. But it's basically to be able to educate our citizens about the town government, how the, how the different committees work. So you'll be hearing from us.
I think that's excellent, because we certainly need, we need a little bit more attention so that we can get more numbers.
Right, you know, there are frequently asked questions that we have of all the committees. Zoning Board is certainly one of them. And it's your opportunity to be able to explain how it works, you know, so. I think it'll be very useful, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, because I'm sure you haven't heard yet, because that's going to be coming soon.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I'm actually looking forward to that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, the format is like a 15-minute interview, question and answer type thing for each of the committees. So we'll make an arrangement to come in and tape that here. And then when they get them all together, they can put together a program.
Alright, excellent.
Okay?
Next couple of months.
Alright, thank you guys very much.
Decided this was a good opportunity.
You did decide it was a good job?
Because I didn't think, I just realized we did not have a Town Council rep. And I'm going, well, how would he know, you know, so. Now he knows, and so does everybody else.
Okay, well, thanks for that. Now it brings us to item number three on our appointments. Why, we had a lot of appointments today. Merrimack Public Library Update, submitted by Library Board of Trustees Chair Deborah Covell and Library Director Yvette Kouser. Town Council, the Town Council will be presented with a library update. Sorry, I'm tripping over myself tonight.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening and welcome.
Great, I'm Deborah Covell. I'm the Chair. I was just projecting in my elementary school teacher voice, so.
But it doesn't go across the wires, unfortunately. Now we're all set.
Okay, great. Good evening. I'm Deborah Covell. I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here with our Director, Yvette Kouser, so thank you for inviting us. We look forward to coming before the Town Council and sharing some of the great things that are happening at our library. If you have any questions throughout our presentation, of course, please just ask. The first thing we wanted to talk about was the building. So during the pandemic, we did purchase some air purifiers that have been placed throughout the public on office spaces of the library. We also worked to have the target dates for mask protocols to coincide with the dates of the town. I think it just makes, it makes sense for us all to be in concert. It's less confusing. We certainly want to be on board with what the town is doing. So whatever the other town departments are doing with masks is what the Library Board of Trustees are doing. We've also been working with SMP Architects, just sort of thinking about what the future of the library is, what site potentials there are, what our current site would be like. And so we're just looking forward, you know, I think that's part of our role as trustees, is to always be thinking about what comes next, and what's the best use of our space, and how we work within the town in that way. So we'll just keep you posted as that develops. We have the granite steps. If you've driven past the library, you might notice, we actually don't have granite steps right now. So we had the granite steps replaced, and when they took off the old steps, they noticed there was some damage to a carrier beam. So of course, we wanted to address that. And word is, it's not something that we have to deal with immediately. So the contractor hasn't been able to come back to deal with it at all. So we're going to put the steps back on. So Yvette is working with the contractor to put the steps on. With the intention of taking them back off to deal with the carrier beam at some point. And it's minimal damage, but we take our role as stewards of the building very seriously, and we need to make sure that's taken care of. So those granite steps will be fixed, so that's a bit of an eyesore for us. On the positive side, we did have a granite sign installed this year that looks very similar to the ones that you have at Town Hall. And it was a gift from the trustees marking the library's 125th anniversary, so. The only other couple of things are, we are looking to replace the carpet in 2022. Gets a lot of traffic, so we're working on that. And Tom Boland has been talking with our treasurer and being very helpful. The HVAC system at the library is not stellar, to say the least. It's been, there's been many things done to it in the past. We want to really address that. Again, the building is a town landmark. There's beautiful features in that building. We want to maintain it. We want to take care of it. We're hoping to replace the chiller and just look at overall the HVAC system and what we can do to keep the building in good standing. So do you have any questions about the building and the structural? This is something we talk about and think about a lot, so.
I was just curious, on the steps, I noticed for a while that there was something going on with it. Are we reusing the original granite when we do the fix, or are we putting new steps?
The steps were actually a combination of different materials. And they weren't, I'm not an engineer, but they weren't the right proportions. And then there were, if you remember, it was three railings. You know, there was a railing in the middle, and there were railings on the outside. Those were going to be refurbished. So it was an item that was on our kind of to-do list for a long time, just to make the steps uniform and not mixed materials. And different heights.
I know the road changed over the years a couple times.
Yeah, I'm sure it did.
I'm sure that had an impact on that side, on the stairs. I'm sure that's the case, like the road height, as well as the width.
It wasn't muscle mem, you know, when you go up and down steps, it's muscle memory with the rise. When you walked up and down those steps, it was a muscle memory because the rise was.
Oh, yeah.
This was one was six, one was eight, one was.
That's a trip, waiting to happen.
Yeah, they were all, and that's why they undertook the project to help fix the rise on the steps, to make them all seven and a half, whatever, universal.
Fortunately, not many people use that, I don't imagine.
Yeah, does anybody use those stairs?
Well, not now, because there are no stairs.
When they were there.
No, it's an emergency exit. It's an emergency exit, which I really feel badly saying that with, you know, fire department in the room. But, you know, the way the configuration of the building and the parking is now, is you park kind of in the back and come in through the back, which is the front. So there's no reason to, it's very pretty normally. And during, you know, the July 4th parade, everyone likes to kind of sit on the library steps and get a great view of the parade, but.
Right at that corner, yeah.
And will get fixed.
Okay, well, that's good.
I've always said that if I won the lottery, I'd be tearing down the brown blob next to that beautiful library.
Can I get that on record?
I haven't won the lottery.
That was a big F in there.
I think there's many of us that sit around at the Library Board of Trustees and also think, oh, if only we would win the lottery, what we would do, so.
We could have a Smash Room program. So moving on to, unless you have other questions about the building. We're going to move on to services and our, our services. We're going to move on to services and our, our services and programs. So we returned to full hours in September. If you remember, we had closed in the middle of the day. We were closed in the middle of the day last, last September 2020 for cleaning every day. And then had shortened hours. We weren't open our full evening hours. And we were able to go to full hours in September, and we changed them a little bit. We're no longer open on Sundays. We took those four hours from Sunday and put them in the beginning of the day at 9:00 AM, Monday through Thursday, and then also added another hour and Friday. Well, Friday was the same, Friday was nine to five, but added an hour at the end of Saturday. So now we're open nine to two. And that just seemed to work better with the flow that we saw people using the library and waiting to use the library in the morning. And then we close at 8:30. So, so now we're kind of really returning to you, you know, the normal services. We also started to move our furniture back. We had cleared out, like a lot of organizations had cleared out soft seating and spaced everything out six feet and removed seating, so there was no long visiting. But we're, we're now, the computers are back, computers in the teen room are back, seating is back. We had an opportunity to replace the, the reference desk as well and replace some shelving that was really not working. So now the, it's, we're just trying to make it a welcoming space again. And we have some additional seating that's still going to be returned, but waiting for some other shelving replacement to get done, so we don't move things twice. And we had been doing all 100% virtual programs. That would include children's programs, storytime, lap sits, adult programs, teens, the whole spectrum of ages and types of programs. During the summer, most everything moved outside. You'll remember, we had outdoor seating, we had canopies. We, of course, had our Parks and Rec collaboration with some of the concerts. So that was really nice, because that was kind of returning, returning to normal. When the weather started to turn cold, then we brought the canopies in and the outside seating in. And then now we're starting to open up programs to groups if they want to meet in person. You know, some of our groups, book, book groups, I have a writers group, they still want to meet virtually, which is totally fine. It's based on their comfort level, but we're ready to go to that step when, you know, the patrons are ready to go to that. So that's, that's another thing. Our youth services staff are amazing. They have increased our social media presence exponentially. We're on TikTok and Discord and YouTube and Instagram. They started a podcast for teens that is now getting hundreds of hits. And it's, it's really amazing. I'm so glad I don't have to do that job. I was taught TikTok. I had one of them sit down with me and I was like, that's this TikTok thing the kids are doing. And they showed me, and I went down the rabbit hole of TikTok, and I don't necessarily recommend it, but we're there. If people want to see what we're doing and they're on TikTok, we're on TikTok. You know? So we're, we're, we're reaching out. Our meeting rooms are open. And we have a really neat feature that we added, so you can make a reservation request online, and then staff can coordinate and confirm it, make sure that the requister is following our policy. You need to be a Merrimack resident or have some kind of affiliation with Merrimack and so on. But that's streamlined and hopefully easier for folks. We've also started to do a service called Auto Renew. Our Auto Renewal, where, you know, you check out an item, it's due in two weeks, but what the other libraries in our consortium, there are 12 libraries in our consortium, us being one, a lot of these libraries are doing auto renewal. And the patrons love it. So brought that to the board, we implemented it. And so now, when your book comes due in that two weeks, it'll automatically renew for another two weeks. And if you still need it out, it'll renew another two weeks. So if you are finished with it, you return it. Most of the items in the collection are under this auto renew. There are some items that are not, and they're all listed on the website. We also resumed our designation as a passport acceptance facility back in February. Again, if you need to, if anyone needs to make an appointment for passport application submission, then get on our website, click the time. We have, eight of us are trained to be agents to accept your review and accept your application. And it's very, it's a very simple process, actually. I have been honored to participate in the 275th Anniversary Committee with several of you. And thanks to Matt, who has been incredible spearheading the whole thing. For the library, we were working on some of our programs so that they would highlight local history of New England, of New Hampshire. We had several New Hampshire humanities programs, also historic. These were all virtual. And our children's department had a scavenger hunt of letting the kids find this, you know, where is Mary? Mary is a platypus, stuffed animal. They do them. But, and it's where is Mary in town? And people knew where Mary was. They would go and, and recognize some of these historic locations. And it was kind of a nice version of the, of the scavenger hunt that the Historic Society was doing, you know, because it was a little, little more toned down for the kids. And then one of my staff and I, we were able to participate with Parks and Rec in their Campfire Story Series, which was so much fun. And thank you, Matt, for letting us join in on that and have, you know, stories around campfire. The day I did it, we couldn't have a fire, but we had a theatrical fire with lights.
There you go.
So it was fine. We're in our consortium, we're looking for best practices to digitize items for the Digital Public Library of America. That's an ongoing project. Some of the libraries in the consortium have already digitized items. This would be things like the Merrimack newspapers that we have in our periodical storage room or historic items, you know, anything that, again, that our Historic Society could also, we can do that with them. And so that's just a project that's, it's ongoing. So moving, shifting a little bit to more on the collection, we received an ARPA grant through the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences in the amount of $3,895. We purchased 22 Launchpads, which are learning pads. We have some for children, for adults, for teens, language learning, STEM and STEAM learning. And the nice feature about this is that they don't have to connect to the internet. When the library purchases items that connect to the internet with federal money, then we need to put restrictions on the access because it's the internet. And the library, one of our, our mission statements is that we, we don't censor. We, we want you to get access to the information that, whatever it is that you want. We also purchased a Meeting Owl, which is a device that is a combined microphone, camera and speaker, so that you can have hybrid meetings or hybrid programs and have the folks who are either virtually attending or in-person attending would have the same kind of excellent quality experience for the program. And we've, we've done it for meetings.
Yeah, it's actually really great, because someone could be virtual, they can see us, they can see sort of the whole room. It spins to pick up who's talking, it's really neat.
It's, it's very cool. And we've continued to increase our digital items. There's a neat thing that we have called Heritage Hub that we included this year, which is a genealogy database that includes a fully searchable collection of obituaries. So for folks who are really into genealogy and ancestry, that's just another feature that's, that we have. And we've also increased our library of things items. These are things that used to be called Realia, just objects that you can check out. We're coming up into winter, so we have snowshoes available. If you wanted to check out snowshoes and try them and go have fun and go towards Parks and Rec and hike, we have those. So moving on to staff, we've been able to provide a lot of professional development for our staff this year that included virtual programs on wellness, mindfulness. We're seeing in our field that this is a job skill. Mindfulness is actually a job skill that is desirable and adaptability. I was just listening to a business book on adaptability in the workplace and for the future of work. We also hosted a verbal judo trainer in June. That was a two-part session. And this was a police officer, an active police officer in Maine, who is trained as a verbal judo facilitator. And he was able to train us on how to, when we have, rarely, when we have rare, those rare occasions when the public is a little bit contentious about things in the library, how to get them to comply and speak to them in a professional manner and, you know, just, just all get TS. So that was really wonderful. We had a student intern work with us this spring who worked on a project with our history, local history collection. And that was really, it's always nice when we get students who are really interested in archives and cataloging and local collections and who is very helpful for that. And finally, I am completing my term as President of the New Hampshire Library Association. This is our state association, our professional association, and it is a three-year, three-year term with, you know, incoming president, president and president, past president. So I'm finishing that in December. And I am continuing my term as the current G-Milks Consortium President through next year, because that is a longer-term appointment.
Yvette's very busy.
I am very busy.
I, which is to our benefit. So the trustees also this year, when pandemic started, we made the decision not to charge overdue fines. And we have voted to run a fine-free pilot program, so continuing that. And we're going to reassess it on December 31st. So there are currently no fines in the library. Of course, if a material is damaged or lost, then, you know, that's a different situation. But this is really something that's happening in libraries all over the country. The New York Public Library is doing it, a lot of our local libraries are doing it. And, you know, these are our customers, so we're really thinking about how do we best serve them. And with the auto renewal, if things renew three times for you anyways, are we really collecting much money? So we're just assessing it, we're looking at it and seeing how we can best serve the Merrimack Public. We, on our board, have opportunities for alternates. If anybody is interested in being an alternate, we need to mention that. That would be a position where you would attend meetings and not necessarily be able to vote unless we didn't have a quorum. And they have to apply, I believe, through the town for that, is that correct?
Through the town manager.
And finally, we'll be working on our budget coming up. So we will be coming before you again to talk about that. This year, we did receive some memorials and gifts. In August, we received a donation from DCU in the amount of $5,000, which was accepted at a public hearing prior to our August 17th meeting. These funds are for programs that make a difference in our community. We also have received several book donations from different families in memory of their loved ones. And we're really thrilled to announce that we have started a partnership with Carrying Cupboards to offer donated snacks in our teen room. And I have to give Yvette and the staff credit for bringing this to our attention and are really grateful for the people at Carrying Cupboards who reached out to collaborate on this with us. In conclusion, we thank you for inviting us to come before you and want to extend an invitation to members of the council to stop by the library for a tour and to join our email list to remain updated on programs and events. And you can sign up for that on our website. And I just actually have to also say thank you to our friends at the library, the Merrimack Public Library Development Fund. These are volunteers who just give their time to our community, and we really appreciate all that they do for us, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the library?
Actually, I was going to just say that I wish the automatic renewal was something they had when my kids were young.
No, for real, right? It just takes care of it. It's such a nice thing to have off your plate.
But with the grandkids.
I, but yes, and they, they've gotten, we were going down picking up Hardy Boys books, but my son-in-law said he's buying 10 at a time now, I guess. So those boys are hardcore into the Hardy Boys. But, but no, the, I was going to ask, you know, why do we have fines if we're going to automatically renew? But you just said that that's the way apparently things are going, yeah. And, I mean, I was, I was always late in returning my kids' books, so maybe I felt guilty about it. So people aren't going to keep them longer than they have to, I'm sure, but.
And I think that's why, you know, removing fines is such a big trend now, because librarians are, are seeing it to pain point for people, where people feel shame that I, you know.
And we don't have cash on us, and even I would go, oh, gosh, I owe $1.20, right? There's that feeling of like, oh, what are they going to say something? I don't have money on me, right? So, yeah.
To me, it's more embarrassment than the money.
Right, and we don't want to cause embarrassment. We want people to come in and enjoy themselves.
Right, the materials are there to be used.
One book, wait, it wasn't a problem, it's when you had four, five, then it got expensive.
Or video, or a video or something like that, yeah.
The only comment I'd like to make, I, I don't do TikTok or anything, but I do do Facebook with the library. And, and those, I don't want to say kids, to me, they're kids and not. But the youth staff that do the reading, I'd even listen to them.
I have.
They really, I just, very well done.
They really are amazing.
It's difficult to be able to get an engagement over, but they do.
Yeah.
They really do, so, and that's a real skill that they have.
Absolutely.
Tom, I'm, it's appreciated.
I will, thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Very good, thank you. Well, thank you for coming and updating us, we appreciate it. And if there's anything you need from us, let us know. I'm sure budget season coming up, we'll hear about all the good things going on there.
Good things, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, do you want to take committee appointment?
I was just going to deviate from the, the agenda if I could and move to number one on a new business to consider appointing the following individual to town committees pursuant to Charter Article 4-8. Be Brian Dano for the planning board as a full member. If that's okay with the board, we'll move to that agenda item. Finley and I had a chance to interview Brian last week, a week ago or something like that. And very impressed. Brian is a young native Merrimack resident.
Native?
Wow. Who moved out of town for a short while, but is now back in town and wants to be able to give back to his community. And I think he would be a great asset to the planning board. So we would like to, to move his appointment forward. Do you want to add anything, Finley, or?
No, I was, a young guy coming forward, I was thrilled when, when Tom and I had the opportunity to chat with Brian. So I'm happy that he's here and for a long stay, hopefully.
Okay, so we need a motion to appoint Brian to a three-year seat on the planning board.
So moved.
Barbara beat you to it by.
But you have a second.
A few seconds.
He was a bit more forceful, though.
Huh?
He was a bit more forceful.
He was.
So moved by Barbara and seconded by Lon to appoint Brian Dano to a position on the planning board as a full member. If there's no other questions or concerns, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstaining? That would be noted, so. Brian, do you want to come up and join me, please?
Thank you. What we need to do is swear you in.
That's good.
I, Brian Dano, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a full member of the Merrimack Planning Board according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Congratulations, thank you.
Good old paperwork. Yeah. That's what they say, the work's not complete until the paperwork's done.
I apologize to folks, but appreciate it. The next thing on our agenda was, number four, a community choice aggregation program presentation. This was submitted to us by the town manager, Paul McCauley. Town council to be presented with the details of the community choice aggregation program, an optional buying group organized by municipality or a group of municipalities to benefit electric customers. So, Paul, you want to introduce it?
Yeah, I'll kick this off. Basically, there was a lot of legislation as it related to energy and energy consumption and moving forward and trying to keep energy costs down for the state of New Hampshire. One of the RSAs kind of leads us into this aggregation program where there are certain steps that a community can follow if they want to pursue this for the betterment of the community. Bart is from Freedom Energy. Bart has been with, his company has been with the town for over 10 years now. They actually helped me go out in those great rates that I keep saying that we're in contract for another three years when we do the budget. It's in conjunction with Bart. I say, okay, Bart, we gotta, let's look at renewing, and he goes out and does all my, the bidding for me. So we use his company, Freedom Energy, to do that for the town for both natural gas and electricity, and they've been with us for about 10 years. So Bart brought this to me. I said, I'll bring it forward to the town council so they can hear this and at least get some information about it so they can be informed about it. So Bart is here with, if you would introduce the people you're with, Bart.
Microphone on. Well, yes, today I'm joined with my partners from Colonial Power Group, Mark Capitano, the president, and Stuart Ormsby, the vice president. We've, I actually got an informational packet here. I'll just pass it around to everybody.
You have to come here, I'll make sure the kids hear this.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, I came one short, so he was a benefit.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
He's not here.
Thank you.
Identify this to Paul, the email.
I think, I think we have it.
Yeah. We do. So, yeah, so as Paul mentioned, it's been our pleasure to have worked with the town of Merrimack for, I think, 11 years now, since 2010 we've been together. You recently joined our virtual net metering pool, which is another program that legislature just created under HB 315. So there's some nice net metering rebate money coming to the town of Merrimack starting next year. So this is another new program that was developed by the legislature in, actually, 2019. So there's been a little bit of a delay in terms of the rollout of this program. But Massachusetts, where my partners from Colonial Power Group are from, has had a very robust aggregation program, I think for the past six or seven years, if I'm not mistaken. And essentially, what it creates is an alternative default supply service that's managed and run by the community itself. So Eversource has been your default utility here, and they offer a standard offer. Think of this as an additional standard offer, but offered by the town of Merrimack. And the way that Eversource operates is that every six to eight months, they'll go out to bid, and that has nothing to do with where the market is at any given time. It's just kind of, the alarm clock went out, it's time to go buy your electricity, and as a result of that, it makes it very easy for Paul and myself to best them when we're looking at the town's rates. The same idea applies for aggregation, but you're, as the town council, making a decision for all ratepayers in the community for a program that you can offer and they can opt out of if they don't want to participate. So the reason that we've partnered with our friends from Colonial Power Group is that they administer over 80 communities in Massachusetts, including the city of Boston. They're the best in the business as far as this goes, and I've been working for the last three years to bring this to be a reality here in the state of New Hampshire. I worked very hard to get SB 286 through, which was the enabling legislation, as I mentioned, that passed in 2019. Then we were working with the PUC to promulgate some rules surrounding this program. That was delayed, unfortunately, as a result of both the pandemic, as well as the new Department of Energy that was created, which sucked all of the employees out of the PUC and put them into the Department of Energy, which has slowed things down somewhat. We expect to go into actual production with programs. Lunendary was our first customer that we signed up. We signed them up in 2020, but we see some delays there. But anyway, Mark and I are here to kind of walk you guys through the program, offer information, why this is a benefit to your community, why we think Merrimack should give this its due in terms of consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark to take.
Good evening, Mark Capitano, Colonial Power. To the manager's point, this allows us to go out on behalf of the residents and small businesses and actually participate in the electricity markets. It hasn't been done before up here. It's coming your way shortly. We have seen it work down in Massachusetts. I expect it to work as well, if not better, up here in New Hampshire, just given the way the law was constructed. There's more freedoms here. From your standpoint, how does it affect you? So ultimately, at the end of the day, nothing will change on your bill other than a line item. So right now, your bill is made up of two sections. One of them is supply, that's what we're talking about here, the other is T and D. So with deregulation, believe it or not, the utilities no longer own generation. So they're a poles and wires company, and other companies supply the energy that's on those wires. And they just procure it for you if you haven't gone out and, you know, made a choice. I'm sure your phones will have rung in the past, will continue to ring during these high electricity months, that these third-party suppliers can give you benefits. At least down in Massachusetts, they've, they really haven't come to fruition at all. Certain, the same thing has happened up here as far as.
On the residential.
On the residential side of things. You're just not seeing those savings that they, that they promise. This is very different. So you and I commit to those third-party suppliers to say, yeah, we'll accept your terms and conditions, but we're going to turn the tables on them. We're going to make sure that it's your terms and conditions, and for them to supply your town, they're going to have to have your terms and conditions, no fees to opt out, no penalties, none of that. It's a consumer-loaded contract that allows your consumers to benefit from the electricity market. So what does the end consumer need to do? Believe it or not, this program, I'm going to put it out there as, it's an opt-out municipal aggregation. But what it really brings is choice. This coming winter, there's not an aggregation in place, you get a, you get your standard office service from Eversource. There's not really a choice, or you can go in the shock-infested waters of third-party supply for the residential customer. We don't have the load necessary to bring the suppliers one by one, but when you band a community like Merrimack together, you most certainly will have every supplier looking to serve you. With that, you bring competition to the table, driving down costs. You have the ability to do things in this program that the utilities cannot. Utilities have to buy six months at a time, and you get all of that fluctuation, just as the manager had said earlier. He gets the benefit of different load profile because it's a, all municipal buildings, but you have your own load profile, but you'd get a certain price, or you could have it for two years, three years, four years, depending on what the town's, what the town's goals are. That's what we're going to deliver. So ultimately, and finally, you get to make some choices on your electricity. Up to this point, we just take what we get. We've just been put in this pool, and Eversource delivers it, and we take it. No longer the case. Municipal aggregation allows this body to start to make choices to the benefit of their consumers. We wanted to green it up, create savings, stability, all of that is possible with this program. Any benefits that you receive from the utility, if someone's on a residential assisted, a budget bill, any of those things, all stay in place. There's not any change. If, say you had automatic withdrawal, that will still stay in place. So those are all what we call utility benefits. They'll continue to stay in place. All of that will happen seamlessly. The end customer doesn't need to do anything to participate in the program. The program moves the customer from basic service or standard offer to the competitive supply, and then from the competitive supply to the next supplier. So there isn't anything that the customer needs to do, and what I like about the program? Open process. Everyone knows what's happening because you're making the decisions. It's not behind the scenes. This is going to be the rate, this is going to be the term. If people like the program, they stay in. If they don't like the program, they get out, and there's no fee or penalty to do so. We've given you some documentation. I just wanted that documentation there, just so that, more of a leave behind, but I wanted to leave this open in case people had questions. I know your time is very valuable, so that's the 20,000, or the, I'll call it aggregation 101, and we're out in front of you early. So I'm sure there's many more times that we can get in front of you to explain the program, but we wanted to make sure that you understood kind of what was in front of you as far as a program coming down the pike that could benefit all the businesses and residents here in Merrimack.
Paul?
Just a couple of quick questions. You talk about the council, but if the council decided to move this way, they would have to get an energy commit, what would they have to do? Would we have to get an energy commission together? We'd have to write? What are the steps of the program? I know you gave 20. If you come down a little bit to 15.
Right, so, yeah, okay.
And inside the slides, there is all of those steps written out, but we would develop a program on behalf of the town. That would have to go in front of the town.
Aggregation committee, right. So a small aggregation committee would be formed by the town of Merrimack for the sole purpose of reviewing and develop, helping to develop the plan. But in terms of all of the back office, all of the workload, that would be developed by Freedom and Colonial Power Group in terms of taking the goals that Merrimack stated, both as the council and the group that you appointed for the municipal aggregation committee. And then we would dedicate that to paper, submit that to municipal aggregation committee. If they took an affirmative vote on that, they would then present that to the town council for a motion for approval.
Finley?
Okay, I guess the primary goal when it comes to electricity would be savings. In business, there's so many varying types of business in town, it'd be a different ballgame, but where most of us are, the residential. What type of a savings could a resident expect? Because for me, I've been bombarded, as you suggested earlier, with all these third-party guys buying up the power and selling it to me cheaper. I never changed because I couldn't imagine it was going to be enough for me to worry about in six months, a year, is it going to pop back up to higher than what I was before? So for me, it just wasn't worth an effort. So what might Lunendary look at, where, you know, have they had any experience yet? You said last year they started.
So they signed up in terms of they're moving forward with it. They have not actually gone into production for the program because the rules have not been developed by the PUC yet. But in terms of savings, you know, it's difficult to just go and throw a number out there. I don't want to say that, you know, every time you sign up, you save every single year of the program. Over time, it's been proven to be a significant advantage versus the utility. And the reason for that is now that you have the same abilities that the town does, where you can go and move on opportunities as they present themselves. Whereas the utilities, when they procure, you know, they're going out for procurement right now for their next cycle winter rates. We're at 8.8 cents for Eversource standard offer. Since they're buying right now at the absolute top of the market, ratepayers are residential over, probably going to be paying about 12.5 to 13 cents a kilowatt hour. When you take a look at the delta, for instance, Merrimack on the contracts we have, we're in the low sevens, I believe, for our current contract. So it's a significant opportunity that we took advantage of long-term, and as the market escalated, now we have a larger delta. That's not to say those are the savings you can always enjoy, but because we're nimble, we can take advantage of those opportunities. There's actually someone, you know, driving the bus in terms of that for the ratepayers.
All right. Then, lastly, then, should I be able to expect for our community residents to have the same pricing that our town does?
So.
Short of the taxes. I know we don't have to pay, I guess, tax on it, but short of the, you know, taxes aside.
Your load profile is a little bit different, so I would expect it to be slightly higher than you would on your town buildings. You have a better, you use energy at a better time, normally at a larger amount for the town buildings. They normally get a little bit better pricing.
Yeah, I've got, probably in Massachusetts, 20 municipal customers that all have aggregation programs, and none of them actually buy from their own aggregation program, but they are similar in price, but the town typically gets a better rate on their own, so.
And I did want to just respond, in Rhode Island, they're going through the same process. They asked National Grid to supply pricing across all of the aggregations over the last four years. About 8% to 10% has been the average savings.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Barbara?
Yeah, so if you were to come in, you would, we would still be using Eversource for distribution?
Yes.
And of course, there is a charge for that as well. So that would be added on to the billing at your end, or?
Their end. So that relationship with Eversource would stay the same for every one of the ratepayers in the program. They'd still get one bill from Eversource, they would just have the Merrimack aggregation rate for the energy services charge.
Okay, which is what they do for like, energy, whatever it is, Energy Direct, which is also in the state. A question for you on what you were talking about for your next steps, you were talking about, well, there's, you know, you'd help create a website and a customer service number that I imagine you folks would be on the other end of.
Yes.
Are we allowed to set performance guarantees for the service on those lines and on the website?
Absolutely. So the goal of this program is there's no tax dollars and there's no ads to staff. This simply should be, all we're looking for is direction, what you're looking to do, and we'll take care of all the details.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to air pause. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Lon, you wanted to add something?
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure where I'm going, or, I guess we're being asked to consider forming a new layer of bureaucracy in town?
Well, this would be.
You talk about a town council votes to form a municipal aggregation committee. What's that?
So as part of the statute that was, that was put in place under SB 286, one of the, one of the requirements of moving forward with community choice aggregation is that the town has to form a municipal aggregation committee that oversees development of the plan, so.
How big a committee?
So Lincoln, for instance, had a three-person committee. It was the business administrator from the school board, the fire chief, and the town manager. Lunendary had a four-person committee.
A what?
A four-person committee.
And it must include the school board?
There's no requirements in terms of who it must include. It's appointed by the town council. So for instance, the aggregation committee in Merrimack was the town manager, the assistant to the town manager, the chairman of the town council, and the director of public works.
That's Lunendary, not me.
I'm sorry, Lunendary.
I was going to say, news to me.
You've already signed up, yeah, no. Apologies.
And they answer to whom?
They answer to the town council. So the purpose of the committee, when you're moving forward with your community choice aggregation, there's a couple of different routes that a community can take. So for instance, I've been working with Hanover and Lebanon for a number of years. They're very, very green-oriented in terms of what they want to do with their community choice aggregation. So for their plan, their stated priority is not savings, it's making sure that they're meeting their sustainability goals by 2030 or 2040. So Lunendary has stated that their goal overall is maximizing savings for ratepayers. And so that's something that gets stated in their energy plan. The other things that would be stated would be in terms of input to the plan. So they would identify that the product they would offer would be billed on the utility invoice, because there are two different methods for billing. So you could do, a supplier has their own separate bill, so the customer gets one for the energy charge from the supplier, and then one from the utility for the transmission distribution. Another portion of the plan would be to talk about what happens for folks that are on the low-income plans, and how do they get treated, and things of that nature. So it really just outlines all the ingredients that go into the community choice aggregation that Merrimack would want to bring forward. It's about a, you know, maybe a 10-page document here in New Hampshire. It's a 50-page document in Massachusetts, but they have a lot more rules, so.
And think of it like it's the Constitution. In a sense, just the rules in which we're going to operate the aggregation under.
Can I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
A plan in accordance with the state statute and rules of the Public Utilities Commission? So this magical commission or committee gets formed, and I guess you guys coach about the plan, and it goes to PUC?
Yeah, so once the, once the plan has been approved by the aggregation committee and then submitted to the town council for approval, at that point in time, the statute requires that it gets submitted for a review process by the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission. And I believe they have 60 days with which to tell us there's a deficiency in the plan or it's deemed approved.
And then it goes to?
And we're very much involved.
And then it goes to a town warrant?
No, so I, well, every, I'm still having a hard time figuring out how every, the town is structured because.
Reading your sheet.
Oh, yeah, no. So, but my point being is that I believe under your system here in Merrimack, and I may have gotten that wrong on the sheet, that it only has to go to town council for approval. In a town like Bedford, which is reliant on town meeting day, it would have to go to a warrant article and then approved by the citizens. That was the case in Lincoln as well. And Lincoln is based on town meeting day. But Lunendary is able to approve with just an affirmative vote of the town council.
Merrimack.
Sorry.
You gotta watch that.
Well, I'm sorry, but I was trying to give you the example that Lunendary is able to do that, so I.
Oh, I thought you said you had, they had to go to a town council.
Yeah, Lunendary.
I thought you said they had to go to a town meeting.
No, no. So Bedford would, yeah, Bedford would.
My bad, sorry.
And Lincoln, another customer of ours, had to do that as well.
Okay.
I just have two more things if I may.
Go ahead.
Same list of steps in the process. And I know I'm ahead of the game. We're not in the process. But there were questions that this old brain raised.
Sure, please.
You talk about town and CPG mailings, notifications to eligible customers. Who pays for that?
That they had paid by, well, the supplier that actually serves the aggregation. So let's say that we put out a bid to four or five different suppliers, as we typically do for the town itself. The winning bidder at that point in time takes on the financial responsibility to fulfill the opt-out requirements of the statute. So they would have to go and mail to every ratepayer with a list provided by ever-source saying, here are the ins and outs of the program. Here's your rate, here's the duration, here are your rights under the program. And we, as the aggregation consultant, then process the opt-outs. So people will send those opt-outs back. They can call us, they can go online. There's, you know, four or five different vehicles for them to opt out. We notify the supplier. And once they've opted out, we leave them in whatever capacity they currently are, which is typically standard offer. Anybody that's already buying on a third-party supply contract, like, so the town of Merrimack, for instance, they would be left alone completely. We don't interfere with anybody's existing contracts. This is only geared towards customers that are currently on standard offer with the utility.
And there's absolutely no cost to the town of Merrimack?
Zero, zero cost to the town of Merrimack.
Wow, you guys are good.
Nancy.
Okay. I still have a lot of questions, but I'm trying to wrap my brain around it.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
So if it is approved, if we do what we need to do to be able to have it approved, if we went to the town council, had it, had the requirements determined, went to the PUC, everything's done. Then all of the residents within the town of Merrimack would be in it unless they opt out. Is that accurate?
All the residents that are on standard offer with, still with ever-source.
Correct, right, right. So the exceptions would be those third-party, whatever.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, but each, each resident who, within that criteria with ever-source, would receive a letter explaining what it is and can opt out.
Correct.
Okay.
At any point, I just want to say.
At any point.
This is, you'll get a mailing 30 days before it starts. They'll have 30 days before the program starts to opt out. So they would never get switched, nothing would happen. Let's just say, oh, they wanted to try it, the customer wanted to try it. For some reason, three months from then, they said, geez, I'm not happy with this. I want to go back to ever-source standard offer. They go back to standard offer. No fee, no penalty, they go back. The winter comes, they realize, oh, jeez, you know, the aggregation rate is, I'm making this up, 8 cents, but standard offer now is 11 cents. I want to go back to the aggregation. A simple phone call, go online, and they're back in the program, no fee and no penalty. As many times as they like.
Okay, so as many times as they like?
During the contract.
You can switch monthly?
So, I want to say one thing. Because we don't have smart meters, we can only switch on the meter read, right? So we only know the day that they started, and then the next time they read the readers, read the meter. So ultimately, you could switch every other month if you so desire.
Okay, so whatever decision we make, it is a, without criteria now, for the whole town?
That is correct.
Except for that. Does that include businesses?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Okay, so it's the whole town except for those people. That's an ominous responsibility, in my opinion. And I'm not saying it's not a good one. I'm just saying it's far-reaching. Paul, I'm asking for your opinion.
I think I'm bringing this forward to the town council for you to hear about it, to see if there was interest in doing something of this sort. If, I'm not asking you to vote tonight to set up the committee or anything else. If you're interested, I'll bring it back on another agenda. I'll call Lunendary, I'll see what they did over there. Actually, I'll ask Bart to give me what they did over there and their plan that they set up so we'd have a baseline to see what is needed. The businesses in town, the bigger businesses in town, are already off-shout. They already did it. You know, the big guys are already using different, they're using solar, they're using everybody else.
Right.
The smaller businesses might not be getting up, doing this because it's onerous and it's, you gotta know what you're, when you're in this market, you kind of have to know what you're doing to get your rate because you can think you're getting a great rate and then get back-end with fees and cancellations and everything else. I have one question. I'll answer you, but I have one question to these guys is that, remember, I believe it was Texas with the ice storms?
Yeah.
And they got crushed.
Right, that's my question.
Oh, sorry.
That's good, that's why you're the town manager.
But how would that affect up here? So say, we get, right now, with the town, we have XYZ company out of Texas.
Yep.
And they, somehow they transmit up here.
Yep.
They're probably buying from somebody local.
Yes.
What happens if one of those plants goes down with the transmission? Are they responsible then to switch their transmission to another company to provide energy and electricity? Or is it, for instance, hate to use this as an example, but say we were getting it from Three Mile Island and they had the reactor. Are the company responsible to find us a different source of energy so we're not out of electricity for three weeks in the town of Merrimack in the middle of winter?
Yeah, so under no circumstances, regardless of what happens with any supplier, whether that's for the town of Merrimack or for the aggregation, if something were to happen to that supplier, you would automatically default back to ever-source. So there'd be no interruption in your ability to get electricity at that point in time.
So the transmission and distribution, that is ever-source. All they do is put the electricity on the wire and it just travels. So make no mistake, in that scenario, ever-source, your power goes out, you have a problem with your bill, all the touchpoints that the end user, the customer has, is going to stay the same. It's still going to be ever-source that you need to call. Power goes out, you call ever-source. Problem with your bill, you call ever-source. All of those issues are still ever-source issues. If for some reason you didn't like the supply or the program, you would call the supplier or Colonial or Freedom Energy. Otherwise, all the touchpoints that you have stay the same. It's not different in any way. The power goes out, call ever-source. They take care of poles and wires.
So, so from, to answer your question, if it's something the council, after hearing this, is it something they want to consider and investigate? I'll do more homework and I'll bring back a presentation of committee setup and committee rules and all that other stuff to see if the council wanted to get this moving forward.
I mean, my opinion at this point is I still have a lot of absorption, understanding to do. So I'm not ready to commit. But I'm not, but I am open to listening, to finding out more information. So that's my opinion.
Barbara?
Yeah, I started looking at this when I picked up my packet the other day because my first impression was, ooh. And, sorry, minute taker, I won't be able to translate that. But anyways, and then after I thought about it for a while, I thought it might be a good idea to at least pursue it somewhat only because right now, unless our residents hook up with one of the other third-party arrangements like direct energy, then they're, they only have one option. And I don't think it hurts to give them other options. And maybe we decide that since the whole town is involved in this ultimately, that maybe we do put it on a warrant article at some point for an election in the spring if we can get, you know, that far into the process. But I don't think it hurts to give people an option and they can bow out if they don't want to. And if you do deliver a better cost than 10 cents per kilowatt hour, you'll have me on board.
And if I may, I think, you know, one of the statistics that I find to be most telling about about energy choice here in New Hampshire is the fact that, you know, we've had it roughly since 2001. And 92% of our large commercial industrial businesses have moved away from ever-source and not come back because they have found a benefit to the program. But yet only about 25% of our residential customers have moved away from ever-source. And I think that's because of the fact that, you know, as we alluded to earlier, they're not able to go and negotiate friendly terms for themselves. Or as you mentioned, you were just worried about, well, jeez, what if I pay attention after the six months, the 12 months is up? All of a sudden, my rates doubled and I've given back all that savings I just enjoyed. Under this model, there can't be a holdover rate or some sort of an out-of-contract rate. And the point of contact becomes the town committee. So the town, through your aggregator, is negotiating the contract, making sure all those customer-friendly terms are in there. And you have the ability, up until the point where we sign that third-party supply contract, where you can set up the infrastructure for the program, and then just wait for market opportunities to present themselves. You don't have to, the minute you agree to move forward with this, actually commit to launching the program. You can take your time and again, react to those market opportunities. And I think you'll find, as we found in Massachusetts, the numbers actually line up with what we see in the CNI side here in New Hampshire. Almost 92% of residents in Massachusetts that are under one of these aggregations stay with the aggregation. So it shows that that choice really does have a beneficial impact for all ratepayers as long as that vehicle is there on the residential side that can somewhat mimic that kind of large purchasing power that the CNI guys have.
Nancy?
Thank you. I just have a question, and I don't know if it would be from you guys or from ever-source. So in the event that residents would choose to be part of this aggregate and ever-source would see a significant loss of customers in terms of supply, right? So if they're, what is the likelihood, or is there a possibility that they could then have an additional charge or something for people to, if they know that there's a likelihood that they're going to lose a lot of customers, could they have a, I don't know, like, not a reconnect fee, but every time a resident decides to go back to a default of ever-source, can that, they on that end then charge customers?
There is no fee to switch back and forth to the utility. Utility doesn't make anything on supply. It's supposed to be a break-even proposition for the utilities. So there is, there's no charge to go back and forth for a customer from the utility to supply as long as it's on their meter read. There's no charge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Lon?
So how do you guys stay in business? Who pays you?
So we charge a nominal fee that's embedded inside the supply rate. So it's 1/10th of a cent per kilowatt hour. So let's say that the rate that we chose as a community was 8 cents. Freedom and CPG would add 0.001 on top of that. So it'd be 8.1 cents per kilowatt hour would have worked out to be, so. So again, a very small, but that's for administration and making sure that they're.
So when you paid your bill to ever-source, ever-source would collect that money and then pay, I'm making up the supply, direct energy, that 8.1 cents. And then direct energy would turn around and pay Colonial and Freedom that 0.001. That's how it actually works.
Go ahead.
Makes the question, do the aggregate members, whoever that, however that works, doesn't work in my mind yet, but the aggregate members, do they have a say in that nominal rate you charge for your services?
The, when you say that, you mean?
The customer.
The ratepayers. Yeah, so this is something that gets negotiated by the town council. So it would be involved in our aggregation contract that we have put forward to you. It would have our fee clearly outlined. And again, the fee, similar to how we get paid right now for our services for the town of Merrimack, our fee gets embedded in the natural gas contract as well as the power supply agreements. There's no actual direct check cut from the town of Merrimack to Freedom Logistics. It, you pay your power bill and then the supplier then turns around and then pays us.
Which, just from, in Massachusetts, one of the nice things that town councils like down there, only the people that are participating in the program are actually paying for the program.
Correct. So, yeah, so if you opt out, there's no charge to you for the program that's going on in Merrimack.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. I have to admit that I've been involved in the past with trying to purchase electricity from a different supplier than ever-source. And the difficulty I found with that as an individual, because I didn't keep up with it every six months or every year to renew the contract appropriately in one, is that I went into a default situation, I'm sure. I'm probably in default right now with whatever that supplier is, and it's not necessarily ever-source. So there's no, there's no change to the way it's delivered as a service to the customer. That part is, I'm fine with. And the part that sounds interesting to me here is that if you've set up a committee that meets monthly or three months or six months, whatever the time is, and is, whose job it is to look at and understand where our next switch point is, that's a committee, more than one person, and more than just 8,000 people in the town of Merrimack, that's looking at this and has a chance to make a decision and not lose it, not have it slip by. And so there's a much better chance you could constantly stay at a best local rate or a best available rate. I see that as a vast improvement over everybody individually taking care of themselves just because, you know, none of us are experts in energy and wheeling rates and all those various different things. So from that aspect, I think that's a positive and quite likely a very good thing, especially given the confidence that people can opt out. So if anybody doesn't believe in it, doesn't want to do it, doesn't care about green resources or low rates or whatever it is you're making as your goals, they can choose to just stay with wherever they're at. Or they can go find their own energy supplier. And you said that even those people don't even get affected. They would have to choose or opt in to this program. So for example, if I'm still on somebody other than ever-source, I would have to opt into the community aggregation program and wouldn't otherwise be informed, except through the education that you're suggesting that we do.
I believe that the law states that we have to inform you that the program's going on, but you wouldn't get an opt-out notice. You just, we say, hey, this is what the town of Merrimack's doing, let us know if you want to opt in.
Oh, okay.
And in that, sometimes there's penalties of fees to stop your contract early. So that's one of the things, if you're on third-party supply, we'd want to let you know. But when that contract was up, every so often, to keep the load up, we do these periodic mailings. Say you just went back to standard offer with ever-source. Three months from now, you might be picked up for an opt-out. Now you're on standard offer, and we would mail to you. So that, you know, we continue to get, as people move out, we call it churn, but we keep those customers and your load up so that we're meeting all the requirements.
Right. So, which reminds me, back in the day when I did get involved in this, there was this concept of slamming where people were getting transferred to other suppliers without their knowledge. You guys are obviously not doing that. You're not moving anybody unless they've been either by default part of the community aggregation program or they've had a chance to opt out.
Yeah, correct. We do not put anybody in the program that hasn't received the opt-out notice because they're on standard offer. Or we've communicated to them, here's the program that we're outlining. If you'd like to join, you know, please fill out this card or call us and affirmatively opt in. So we don't make any outbound solicitation other than those notices. So there'll be absolutely no slamming involved in this program.
Okay. So it seems like, on the surface, and again, we'd have to dig into it further and decide to go forward, but it seems like on the surface, it's an opportunity. One of the things that Lon was, I think Lon was concerned about was another layer of bureaucracy, another department in the town or another committee or something like that. But this one is focused specifically on energy and has a job to look at it every month, three months, six months or a year, to see that we're getting the appropriate pricing structure for the supply. And you're telling me through Paul's question that. And you're telling me through Paul's question that the, the issue that happened in Texas where they were able to bump the rates up a thousand percent because they, they lost generators couldn't occur. The rate we've locked in as a contract would be the rate you'd pay.
Correct. And if anything happened with that supplier where, you know, Texas caused a situation where a number of suppliers went bankrupt. If anything happened where that supplier was unable to perform that contract any further, you would default back to the utility service, the standard offer. So the customers would revert back to the program they had all been on before. That's unlikely to happen. I just point that out.
Yeah, but I mean, so, so, so if 50% of New Hampshire went with, with aggregate things and then their company all of a sudden went bankrupt, would Eversource suddenly be slammed with 50% more customers?
Eversource by law has to absorb any, any customer that wants to come back.
It's not Eversource.
Well, the supplier that they have, their default supplier.
That's the risk that they take by, by supplying that. That's a correct statement.
And, and we're confident that they would be able to handle something like that without playing games on rates and stuff like that?
That's correct.
Interesting.
And just, just, just Texas, the, the, the major reason that Texas blew up the way that it did is Texas does not have a, a capacity market. So one thing that New England has for redundancy purposes is about 10% of our generation sits idly by, you know, most of the year except for emergency scenarios. Texas has a pure market scenario where the generation that's in play is all the generation they have. So when they had that catastrophic freeze down in Texas, they had no emergency generation that could then come online. We all pay a pretty hefty price for this safety net, if you will. Texas opted not to do that, but in New England, that would be an extremely unlikely scenario to unfold.
Right. Well, I mean, our generators are prepared for cold weather.
Yeah, well, we have that too.
They're shut down.
I just have one more clarity thing. When it comes to searching for rates, our committee will do that or do you guys do that? So, so we will, first we'll meet, find out what you're looking for as far as rates go. And then we'll bring rates to you and then you make the decision on the rates, term and the rates. We're going to show, making this up, it, it's a two-year at, uh, at nine cents and a three-year at eight and a half cents. And then you make that decision. We'd like to have the, the two-year rate or the three-year rate.
So you're bringing this information to this committee?
That is correct.
All right. I didn't know if they were out doing the searching and I thought that would be so cumbersome, but no, very good. Right, but if, as long as there's some additional communication going along there, it would be a lot better than where I'm at today. Where, you know, they just, soon I go back to default and so, you know, there's a website that says I could pick a different rate, but if I don't go there, then, you know, but it sounds to me like you have a little bit more aggressive or proactive stance where you actually reach out to and work with the committees.
Exactly. I mean, this is what we do all day, every day. All we do is municipal aggregation. So we're in the market every single day. The utilities can only be in two. So it just, advantage aggregation. We're just always there. So if, if something happened like last year, that, you know, pricing was so cheap, you could extend that, you know, 36 or 40, the utility can't. They just buy the six months for you and that's all they can do and that's by statute. That's one of the things that, you know, it's advantage aggregation, so. Lots of it in.
I mean, just to add one thing is that, you know, there's questions around sort of the, the concern around potential bureaucracy and the, and the establishment of the committee. To, to be clear, the statute, as Bart said, requires that a committee be established to, to help create the plan, to launch the program. After that, if, if the council so chose, you could disband the committee if you didn't want to have one. It'd be up to you. It's just for the initial start of the program. And, and you could elect to have, for example, the, the town manager sort of interact with the, the consultant to sort of manage things from there on.
All right. Okay. Great. Well, I appreciate the information. I, I think we need to, um, take this under advisement and, and see where we can go from here. So I definitely appreciate the opportunity to hear about what you have to offer. I don't mean to be rude, but I assume you're not the only game in town doing this kind of thing.
Uh, no, not, not being rude, there's, uh, there's, there's two other outfits. There's, um, just to shorten your homework for you, there's, uh, Standard Power, which is, um, which is one outfit. And then the second outfit, um, is a more complex grouping. It's a coalition of communities. It's the, I think it's called the New Hampshire Power Coalition. They've gone with a little bit more, uh, complex route. So it, it does kind of meet the bureaucracy in that, um, the towns are forming kind of a, an electricity purchasing group. And they have to fund that out of the gen, the general fund of those communities. So that, that one, it sounds like probably wouldn't, wouldn't be what, what Merrimack, uh, Merrimack would opt for. So, so those are the, the other two options that we have currently in the state besides, besides, uh, freedom and colonial power.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in. Now I have to do my own research and. But yeah, the details I need to. Um, we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Legislative updates from state reps. I do have a, a letter we received from Maureen Mooney, Representative Mooney. She says, greetings to town councillors. The filing period for town, for House and Senate bills for next year has closed. Great. After bills are finalized by sponsors and cosponsors, they will be published soon. To peruse the list of quote legislative service requests unquote for next year by title, subject matter and sponsor only, go to http colon slash slash forty dot seventy-one dot six dot two forty-eight slash LSR underscore search. L S R, excuse me, LSR underscore search. That's S E A R C H slash. Probably put a link on the website for this. The House Special Committee on Redistricting is meeting and reviewing proposed district maps. This process is done every 10 years based on census numbers. She gives the committee's website, which is even longer, so I'm not going to read it out, but we'll put it on the website so you can find it. All proposals so far keep Merrimack and with eight state house seats and within congressional district number one. Proposals for state senate districts have not been introduced yet. Public hearings on redistricting maps will be held at the state house on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021 at 10:00 AM and Wednesday, November 10th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. Thank you for all you do. Respectfully submitted, Representative Maureen Mooney, Republican from Merrimack. Seeing nobody else here unless you've got something to add, Barbara, from your husband. We'll move on. That's probably good. Brings us to town managers' report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just two items on my manager's report. The sidewalk, the sidewalk roadwork is continuing on Woodbury Street. They're moving along at a pretty good clip. They are, are a very well-oiled machine. They have several different crews there and they all seem to work together like, and do what they got to do and keep the road open when they need to keep the road open and close the road only when they need to close the road. Excuse me. So that work is continuing for at least another couple of weeks. And then last meeting, um, a gentleman came about the road at Sklar and, uh, I drove it today. While it's not perfect, there are no more huge potholes that you go in in or ruts. It is a dirt road, so it is a little bumpy, but it was nothing compared to when the gentleman was here the other day. So I don't, I didn't have time to touch base, whether it was highway or one of the neighbors got in there with something, but the road has been, the bumps are out of the road, so the potholes are out of the road. So just want to let the council know that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the town manager's report? Barbara?
Yeah, I saw the pictures and it was town. Yep, and he, and, uh, Mr. Drew in census, thanks.
Okay. Bob, uh, Nancy?
The only other comment I want to make is that I think there are opinions changing regarding the Rotary. I think people have these visions of a horror show and I've been through it a couple of times. It's wonderful. I, now you can debate whether we needed it or not. That's a whole different issue. But how it's functioning, I think is very well done.
Actually, I, I will touch on that as well. I happened to pay attention the other night for some reason to the school board meeting and the finance manager, Matt Chevanel, admitted to he and his wife going for a spin a few times around the Rotary. And that was their date night, I guess. So I just thought I'd pass that on.
Exciting times. I will pass the comments along to Dawn.
Okay. I've enjoyed it as well because I don't have to stop anymore coming off Turkey Hill. Unless there's traffic in the circle, but there is very rarely traffic in the circle. We have no consent agenda tonight. Whole business. We've taken care of number one already, which brings us to number two on the back of this page. Commit, uh, Flying Eagles Field Enhancement Project Request. Submitted by Robert Frago. Town council to consider the Flying Eagles request to restore the field to its original open boundaries by removing a select number of trees located on the town-owned property on Karen Griffin Street known as the Sklar Waterfront Park. Sounds ominous. Go ahead. Make sure your mic is on, please. That's it.
Thank you very much for your time. Uh, I'm Tim Sauter. I'm the president of the Southern New Hampshire Flying Eagles. We're an RC airplane club and one of the few in the area. It's, uh, pretty well regarded throughout the area within the modeling community. We're also an AMA or Academy of Model Aeronautics Charter Club and it's here in Merrimack. We're one of the few clubs that actually does training. Uh, we teach people how to fly RC aircraft. The, the big challenge for our club, uh, right now we have 76 members, uh, which is pretty good for the size of our club. Uh, we actually do have a runway, a textile runway, uh, at the field so we can have, uh, smaller aircraft fly. So younger, uh, people or people on a tighter budget are able to fly smaller aircraft, uh, more affordable aircraft, which has brought in a few more members. But our biggest challenge, uh, for a long time now is ours, club is one of the smallest as far as airspace, not incumbent by trees. So the trees have really, uh, grown up since the club was, uh, created back in 1984 with the town of Merrimack. And, uh, they, they make it a, a real challenge not only to fly the aircraft, but also if we, uh, if a, a student or a member loses the aircraft, loses control of the aircraft, then it, it ends up in the tops of the trees and that always creates quite a challenge for us. So, uh, with that said, I'll let Bob, uh, give the presentation.
Well, since, I guess this is on, uh, my name's Bob Frago, as Tim mentioned. And, uh, since Tim pretty much summarized my presentation, but that's fine. We're the Southern New Hampshire Flying Eagles and, and Tim said, uh, we're a bunch of flying enthusiasts. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about who we are, what we do and what kind of parameters we operate under. So with that going forward, I hope I can get this thing to work. Yeah. So as I said, we're a bunch of aviation enthusiasts. We fly radio controlled airplanes. These airplanes are subject to the same principles as full-size aircraft. So, uh, they go up, they go down, they bank. Uh, we're in control of that through a radio control. Uh, the club was organized in 1988 originally and it was on land owned by, uh, Patterson Construction Company, which the land was later acquired by the town. Uh, we're a chartered member of the, uh, Academy of Model Aeronautics, uh, the AMA as we refer to it. Uh, we operate under the rules of the Federal Aviation Administration, the same folks that, uh, control private aircraft, full-size aircraft through commercial airliners and, and aircraft. We are also subject to some of their rules and regulations. Uh, roster as I saw was about 65 members. It, we, I think we had a couple more join since I put this together. Uh, we come from a diverse line of work. I mean, some of us are engineers, pilots, CPAs, tradesmen, students. We're a bunch of folks that are either school age through seniors. And our membership's open to everyone, male, female, young, old. We invite everybody to enjoy the, the challenges of, uh, model aviation. Uh, the Academy of Model, uh, Aeronautics was founded in 1936 and it was founded to, um, um, foster interest in, in model aviation. It's comprised of about 195,000 members, organized in 11 districts, over 2,500 clubs across the United States. Uh, the AMA promulgates the rules, uh, and the safety regulations of which all the chartered clubs fly under. Uh, the AMA also sanctions various flying events for us. They provide technical support and they even provide supplemental liability insurance for these sanctioned events. Most importantly though, they are a la, a liaison between our chartered clubs and the Federal Aviation Administration, particularly where it comes to, uh, promulgating laws regarding unmanned aircraft systems, which are referred to as UASs. So besides being, uh, under the auspices of the AMA, as I said, we're subject to the FAA as well. And under those rules, uh, each, uh, USA pilot, uh, UAS pilot rather, uh, has to be registered with the FAA. Tim's registered, I'm registered. Uh, all our aircraft, uh, I own nine aircraft. Every one of them has to have my registration number on it, much like the tail numbers on the commercial plane. Uh, our model aircraft are restricted by size. As long as we stay below 55 pounds, uh, we have special accommodations through, uh, a community-based organization like the AMA. If you get above 55 pounds, you're subject to the, uh, regulations of a full-size aircraft. Our 55-pound aircraft at our field would be like trying to take a tractor trailer unit and back it into your garage. It just won't fit our field. They're huge aircraft. The FAA requires that we operate in designated areas that have to be approved and with specified, uh, altitude limits. So we're allowed to fly up to 400 feet vertically and, um, within a radius of 400 yards. The problem with that is we need to see the aircraft in order to control it. So our aircraft flying is really line of sight. If we can't see it, we can't control it. Uh, so we fly well within the, the 400 yards allowed, uh, particularly given our field that's not 400 yards, uh, to allow us to go any further. The other thing is we need to comply with all FAA flight regulations. And what I mean by that is when you have, um, um, political people coming in, if you have the president came in, for example, into Manchester, the FAA will, uh, put a curtain around the airspace. Now, we're, we're very small aircraft. We, we have flight line of sight. We're nowhere near the airport, but we're still restricted. We're in other words grounded as long as the FAA says we are. So we respond to the AMA, we respond to the FAA. They control our activities. We've been very fortunate. The town of Merrimack has allowed us to use, uh, the Dobris Patterson Field. We've been there for over 30 years. We like to think that we give back to the community as well. And besides being, uh, an activity that provides fun enthusiasm for both young and old, we've maintained and developed further the, the Patterson Field at our expense and I'll get into that in a minute. We support the Merrimack Fourth of July Parade every year. Uh, we participate in the Conservation Committee's cleanup areas, even though it's not the field that we're at. Uh, we lend a hand cleaning up the surrounding area. One of the things we're, we're most proud of is we raise funds for the World War II Veterans Honor Flights. If you're not familiar with those, what those are, uh, the Honor Flight is a system where, uh, World War II veterans, of which we're going to have fewer and fewer every day, are flown down to Washington DC to see the World War II memorials at no expense to them. Uh, all of that money comes from clubs and other people who, uh, support the, the activity. And we raise our money to do that from basically, uh, two of our favorite events. We have an event in the fall called the, the Float Fly. Now we've just completed our 24th annual Float Fly. Next year will be our 25th, which is kind of exciting. We fly over at, um, uh, Greenfield State Park. Uh, we trade our wheels off our aircraft for pontoons and we fly off the wheel, off the water. Uh, it's a three-day event. We camp out there. We, it's, it's a great event. We invite, uh, flyers from other clubs to join us. Uh, most years we have close to 40 flyers, uh, and two to three aircraft per flyer. So it gets kind of crowded. Forty is about all we can do at that, that site. Uh, but it's been a great event for us. It's been a money raiser. Uh, there's a landing fee charged to each pilot. Uh, we have a raffle for a plane, uh, which we sell tickets for. We also have a commissary for lunch for the days that, that they're there. So that's how we raise some of our money. Our other major event, um, is called, uh, quite rightly, uh, the Frozen Finger Fly-In. Uh, it takes place the first week in February each year and it's the one time of the year we pray for snow. Because again, we trade our wheels for skis and we fly off the snow. Our club is one of those clubs that flies year-round. The only thing that keeps us on the ground is inclement weather or high winds. Otherwise you'll see some of the guys over there and it doesn't matter how cold it is or how hot it is, there'll be guys putting their planes in the air. We've supported the, uh, the Boy Scouts in the past for their interest in aviation. Uh, and we've supported the Winter Carnival and Toys for Tots program. So it, it's our effort to give back to the, the community for the privilege of using that field that we have for the past 30 years or so. So why are we here? In 1988, uh, our original flying site was in open space. It was just a dirty area. And in the intervening, intervening 30- It was just a dirty area. And in the intervening, intervening thirty-four years, numerous trees have grown up on all four sides of the fields. And as Tim was saying, it seriously impacts our operating capacity in creating a smaller space to fly in. We also have to fly above the trees because there is no open space anymore. And as I said, being line of sight, we need to see the planes in order to control them. So the Flying Eagles are seeking permission from the town to restore the field to most of its original boundaries when we first took over the field. And this effort will be accomplished by the club members. We're not asking for help from the town, although we'd welcome it if it was there. But this is something we will do on our own once, once we get approval. Here's a couple of views of the field. These are both taken from Google Earth. Patterson Field, as is known, in nineteen ninety-two was an open space. I'm going to use a pointer. I hope I don't point at anybody. But this area up here, this is, these are trees. This picture was taken in the winter. So you can see there are trees here. But this is an open lot, all the way back to, I think it's Wright Avenue where Patterson Construction Company is. This is our field today as it exists. So you can see how much the trees have grown in from what was over here. There's the Merrimack River. And this is our little flying field nestled in all these trees. So it's been a bunch of substantial growth over the years. If you look at the, at the creek here that runs down through the property, this is that creek buried in the trees over here, and it runs this course down here. So that's the condition of the field yesterday and today. These are some of the investments we've made in this field. Obviously, it's no longer a dirt area. There's grass that we maintain. We've paid for and installed safety fences. This area right here is called the pit. That's where the flyers prepare their planes. We built those flight stands. At the very back up here is this pavilion that we built and installed. It has some picnic tables in it and chairs and a rest area for the guys in between flights. These containers in the back, we've brought those in. They hold our field equipment, as well as some of our flying material for both the Fun Fly and the, I mean, the Float Fly and the Frozen Figure Invent and that type of thing. Last year, we purchased this mower. This is an eight-thousand-dollar machine. The AMA helped us with a couple grand on that. We spent six thousand dollars of our own money to purchase this equipment. In the past, we were mowing with a typical home riding mower. Took us four and a half hours to mow the field. I know, because I did it several times. This machine allows us to do it a little over an hour. It cuts better. It maintains the field in nice condition. We've also installed some Preacher Comforts over here, this little building. We have some nicknames for that, which I won't go into at the moment. But we've tried to make that field a place where you can come for the day and enjoy yourself with your hobby and socialize with friends as we go along. This is an aerial view of our field. And the point I want to bring out here, if you look over here, here's the pit area and the cars that are parked, okay? This is our runway that we put in about six years ago. The rules of our club are that you cannot fly over the, what we call the infield. That's this area here, nor can you fly over the pit or the cars, which means you have to keep your aircraft either on the runway area or over to the east. You can see how quickly whatever field we have was cut in half by just the sheer size of it. And all these trees have grown up around this field in the thirty years that we've been there. This is a couple pictures of looking at the field. This is looking north. Our landing approach looking north comes in right in here. We call this the notch. One of the trees we're going to talk about is this tree in here we'd like to remove to give us a better approach to the runway. And this is a close-up of that tree that we'd like to take down. From the east side of the field, these are all sapling trees that grew in the last thirty years. These pine trees were there originally, but they were the height of some of these trees thirty years ago. Once we get off the ground, I'll show you a picture in a second. We wind up being above these trees and beyond the pine trees, which means our line of sight is just this open area that you can see right there. And looking south, there's the standard trees that, at the south end of the field. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. But we would like to cut a notch right in here, and I'll explain that in a moment. Tim wanted his picture of the presentation, so Tim, Tim is here. This is Tim with one of his aircraft at the field, so you get an idea of what our planes look like. This is Jim and Nick. Nick is one of our young members, and Jim is helping him prep his plane. You can see the size of one of Jim's planes here. This is Tim's plane again, just sitting on the grass. You can see, it really cuts into the width of this field as to how far we can go before we start running into trees. And here's the issue we're really addressing. If you look at this picture, here's an aircraft that's taken off of the runway. It's immediately over the trees at the north end of the field. So as it gets out past there, our line of vision to see the plane is really reduced. So we'd like some help in removing some of these trees so we get a better view looking outward from, from the field. So what to be done is we would select a number of tall trees at the north end of the field, one I mentioned earlier, that we'd like to take down to improve our landing approach from the north. If you know about aircraft in general, planes always take off and land into the wind. So if the wind is blowing from the north, we will take off in an awfully direction, but need to land from a southerly direction. And vice versa, if it's blowing from the south, we'll take off to the south and land from the north. That becomes important when we talk about the notch at the south end of the field. The trees along the eastern edge of the field, the picture I showed you earlier, what we'd like to do with those, they're really just more than saplings. Most of them are about four inches in diameter. Some may be as much as six, but most of them are all under six. They're just, they've grown up in the last thirty years. We'd like to take those down in log lengths, and we'll do one or two things. We'll either reduce them firewood, or we'll leave them in lengths and use them much like you would a railroad tie as a border along the edge of the field. So our purpose, you've seen how we've maintained the grass field. We want that place to look good. We'd like the town folks that, that are around, come down and see what we do and see how well we maintain the property. We know we serve or we have the pleasure of flying at generosity of the town. So we try to protect it at all costs. The tree stumps, we would cut those close to the ground, leave the stumps in for soil retention. There is a plethora of vegetation, so soil retention after we remove the trees is not going to be an issue. We go in with a bushmaster twice a year and cut the stuff down, and it prolifically grows back within a month and a half. So we're not concerned at all about, you know, rain taking the soil away. It's well-maintained by the vegetation that's there. The tall trees, the big pines, are beyond our capabilities, so we would hire a commercial company to come in and take those down. We have talked to firewood companies, and we've talked to tree service companies to see if there's any value in the wood, and we're told there's none. It's not valuable for, to sell for firewood. It's not of any value to cut into board for, you know, for lumber. It's basically saplings. We're looking at this project to be done probably over the next two or three years, and that's basically what our club resources would allow in terms of our manpower and the money we have to put forward to this thing. So we're not looking to come in and clear-cut the property. We, certain things we'd like to do first, and then we'll do the rest as we can get to it. So looking again at the field, this is the area that we would like to clear. We're not taking all the trees down. We'd just like to open the side of the field that we're forced to fly into and take these trees down and cut this notch at the lower end. The approach from the north, when we're flying an aircraft, we've taken off from the field, and we're coming in from the north, we'll come up this way, over the space, and come into what we call the notch in here. There's one big tall tree we'd like to take out, but there's, the trees are not that tall that they present a problem. And also, we have a long enough approach to the runway that we can land on the runway from the north very carefully. The problem is from the south. The trees are very tall right here. It's a very short distance from the road to the southern edge of the runway. And the problem is, when we come in, we're above the trees, we have to drop down to the field. And what we do is we cut back on our throttle. We throttle back to neutral, but gravity takes over, and as the plane comes downward, it picks up speed. It's just the natural functions of gravity. And so we're approaching the field faster than we can control. And what happens? The plane touches down more than three-quarters of the way down the runway, and we overshoot the runway. It's just a very difficult approach. So what we'd like to do, we don't want, we're not looking to take these trees down. We're just looking to cut a little notch in here that would allow us to descend closer to the ground before we touch down on the runway. So that's the request that we have before the Town Council this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Tim and I would be glad to answer any questions. I do have a handout of everything you've seen that I'll give to you. And we'd also like to extend an invitation for you folks to come out and see us. I think we're probably one of the better-kept secrets in the town. People don't even know we're there. We've been there for over thirty years, and no one knows we're there except club members. So if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be glad to do that.
Well, that, that sort of says you're not bothering people, which is probably a good thing to do. You're able to enjoy your hobby and have fun without too much troubles. Lon?
Thank you for a very cogent presentation. I just have a couple of questions. Your, your two pages that talk about a flying field enhancement project steps. I think, I'm not sure the question for you or for the town manager, but number five, when we begin to talk about club members cutting trees, advertising tree firewood, clipping, commercial cutters to remove tall trees or pine boards. One, my biggest concern is liability of that kind of activity going on in town property by others. And then, I don't have any problem with the proceeds as such, but I think I understood that you would use some of that to help with the cost of the project.
We actually looked into trying to get some income off of it.
The liability question for me is a big one.
If, if I may, Mr. Woods, the document you're referring to, when I was talking with Becky Thompson, she asked for the presentation or any documentation we had about the project. And the document you're referring to was our first working document, when we were strategizing about how would we approach this thing as far as expanding the field, and what were the options in terms of dealing with the wood? Was there, was there any marketability to it? How would we take it down? Would we do it ourselves? So we did investigate having other folks come in to do it, and we found that that's, they have no interest in doing it. As far as the liability portion of it, all of us have our personal liability insurances and our homeowner's insurance. So we're, we would assume the risk of taking down these trees, except for the big ones. We're not touching those. That's beyond our skill level. But most of us are homeowners. We have chainsaws. We've taken trees down in the past. And as I said, these trees are saplings. They're three inches in diameter. They're not big trees. They're just a lot of them. So I, we're willing to assume the risk. We would certainly sign anything the town wants in terms of, you know, not holding you people responsible in any way. We would just like permission to do the work.
Yes, ma'am.
Nancy? Thank you. I had actually talked to one of the members of the Conservation Committee, because I've been, I've been down there and actually saw people flying planes this week. It was great. Can you tell me, that, the photo that we had up there, it, within that little, yeah, is that, you're talking about clearing all of those trees within that?
Yeah, initially, yeah, when we talked, we walked, worked with Mike Drewin quite a bit in working on this project. We, we would, as I go back, let me back up a little further. This is a fun little machine. Okay. So this original thing, you can see that the area we're talking about would probably be from a line like this. So in other words, it's this little square rectangle in here. We're not touching any of the trees that are up in here, but we would like to kind of square off or make a rectangle out of the field. So yes, we are asking to go to the edge here, but probably from a line across like that. So not clearing the whole area.
Thank you. About how many trees is that? Do you know? It's, it said, I understand it was a few. It sounded like it's a lot more than a few.
Numerically, when you look at the, yeah.
Like that photo?
Yeah. When you, when you look at the photo, all these trees that you're seeing, let me, let me back up to a better, better slide. It might help. All right. Here's the eastern side of the field that you're talking about. There, I, I don't know that I could count right now and give you a number right there, but they are thick, and they are about yay big around. So if you're asking for a number, there could be, I don't know, eighty trees in there, but they're all saplings, and they're all bunched tightly together. They just grew up from, from, you know, the tree pods that fall in the normal cycle of the weather and took root and grew. So there's a, numerically, there's a lot of them. In terms of size, if you reduce them to a good-sized tree, you're probably talking maybe a couple dozen at the most. And again, I'm guessing at that because, like I said, there's just a lot of little trees out there. But they're tall.
I'll come back to you, Nancy.
We are actually lucky to have Mr. Drewin here.
Oh, is he?
Who is the, the chair for the Subcommittee for Sklar for the Conservation Committee.
Right.
So, Mr. Drewin, did you want to speak to it?
Michael Drewin, Five End of Oak Drive. So they, they came to me with their request. I noticed them flying one day, and I went over, and they were telling me about the trees. And I did a little research, and I, I found that it was a, a playing field before. And, you know, I brought it up to the Conservation Commission. Nobody wanted to vote on it because it's not our property. They're leasing it from the Town Council. But we would like the wetland buffer around Natta Cook Brook, the stream that goes through, to be respected. Obviously, if they go within that buffer, they'll have to come to us. But they do a really good job maintaining the property. They keep it real clean. You know, I'd like to see them be able to expand to what it previously was. I believe once the park gets going more, that more people are going to become interested in their group, and they'll need the space, definitely. You have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Appreciate it. Nancy, did you have follow-up questions?
Yes, thank you. So that's the clump of the smaller trees. And then the pine trees are big pine trees as well?
Yeah, the, the big pine trees are right along the road area, right in here. And as I said, once we take off, we start to cycle, we have to avoid those trees. So we tend to be flying out in this area quite a bit, which is okay if we can see the plane. But the trees are causing us a problem now because we no longer can see it. We're allowed to fly up to four hundred feet, and that's, that's plenty. If you fly much higher, the aircraft gets smaller and smaller to your vision, and it just becomes a thing in the sky. So we, the entry-level planes and these things are around three hundred dollars. I have a plane that, right now, don't tell my wife, is about twelve hundred dollars. And some of the other guys have planes close to two thousand dollars. So we have a vested interest in the sport we enjoy, and also the financial commitment we've made to enjoy that hobby. So we want to protect what we have in terms of our investment, as well as our enjoyment. Our only problem is the trees are in the way.
Thank you. Just, just one more. Thank you. And would what you're proposing, taking into consideration what Mike was talking about, the buffer zone, that would not be impacted?
The buffers on, we, we did research, the protective codes in terms of being near waterways and stuff. The big issue right here would be if we were anywhere near this Merrimack River, it's, it's like a fifty-foot buffer that would have to be maintained. It's a much smaller buffer along this creek. And fortunately, this is where a lot of the vegetation stuff is, which is not much of a problem to us. There are a few trees that we might want to take down, but in general, there wouldn't be anything that would affect the soil erosion or any debris. We'd not put anything in the river, obviously. But as far as anything for, that would, you know, damage that, that waterway, we'd certainly be in a position to protect that.
Mike, did you want to add to that?
Yeah. So the buffer- So, the buffer for the river is about two hundred and fifty feet and the state has different zones on what you can do in each zone. As for the stream, from what I've seen, I walked right up to it, it's mostly thick vines, grapevines. There's not really any tall tree that can grow there because of that. Now, along that road, which is still town property, still not conservation, my only concern is people off roading right there, if that's made open. So if they could make some sort of barrier, I know they have a metal wire fence on the southern portion. If they could do something like that, I think that'd be good. Otherwise, they're going to have to deal with off roaders in there.
In the new field area?
Yeah. And the northern part, they're going to...
This is why we talked about, if we take the trees down, keep them log links, we would build basically a retainer like you would with railroad ties to establish the boundary there. As far as folks getting onto this property in here, one, you have the creek, they can't get across that. And secondly, as Mike was talking to, the vegetation here is so thick, it's not the trees that are a problem going in this area, it's all that low viney stuff that's in there. It's a battle walking through there. That's why when we do the work, it'll be in the fall because we need, it's knee deep in there trying to walk through that stuff. So it serves to retain the soil, but it's really problematical in trying to recover a plane or do any kind of cutting anytime during spring and fall.
So I imagine there's a couple of things you could do, leaving the stumps there, leaving trunks, forming that barrier and things of that nature to try and discourage off roading as much as is currently discouraged by having the trees there.
Yeah. One of the things Mike and I had spoken about when we walked the property, there was, going back a couple of years ago, there was a good amount of four wheeling activity going through this whole property. There were dirt roads all through the place and if you're into four wheeling, I'm sure it was a lot of fun. Mike asked us if we take some of these tall trees down, could we block some of those old roads? And certainly we can do that. So we can use the tall trees as road barriers as well as boundary markers.
Actually, that's a bigger problem in my estimation. Not your problem at all. That's something we have to deal with because it's a lot of destruction that, I haven't been down in a few years and the stuff you showed me tonight proves that I haven't been there in a few years because it's a lot of advancements that I have noticed. But that's, you know, as far as blocking the roads, I don't think that's what we should necessarily do. We have to deal with that problem in some other fashion.
Yeah. We're willing to work with the town any way they'd like to. As I said, we fly the generosity of the town, so we want to help you guys out as much as we'd like to fly there, so.
Go ahead, Sean. I'm supportive of what you would like to do. I'd like the town involvement so we know, I don't know what the council wants to do yet, but if in fact we do it, I would like for the town to know what's going on. I know the rules, as Mike had suggested, do go back to like two hundred and fifty feet. There are, it doesn't forbid you from taking trees closer to it, but there are definite rules that are involved. But as long as we know what's happening and the finished product is something that isn't like a tornado went through.
Our vision, I'm sorry to interrupt you, our vision is to have a field that's comparable to what you see there, is what we've maintained. Now, whether we'll grass it all or just mow the vegetation and keep it nice looking. We've also talked about, if need be, we would plant some small pines or whatever as a boundary. There was one discussion, as I said, that when Mr. Woods asked a question about that piece of paper, which was a working document for us. And one of the things we talked about was rather than just have this notch here, could we clear this area in here and plant a tree farm? I mean, we came up with all kinds of ideas. We just said, let's just throw at the wall and see what makes sense when we're done. There are some things that if we could have sold some of the wood, if it had any marketable value, would have helped us out, but since it's not worth anything, it'll revert back to what we can fundraise and cut at our own expense. So we tried to stay within a reasonable footprint of the original one. We're not clearing all the way back to the Patterson property behind it. We don't need to. But like I said, we would like to open the area to help protect against plane loss and have clearer visibility when we are flying.
Paul, I think Paul wanted to say something.
Paul, you wanted to add something?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I just have the two concerns. One is the shoreline protection. And we do have an ordinance that's a little bit more strict in town than the normal shoreline protection, so we'd have to follow that about cutting trees. We had to deal with that when we were cutting trees at Wasserman Park, remember? With it and those things. So I would like, if the council sees before they start any of this stuff, to get DPW involved because they're the ones that definitely look at shoreline protection and things. And I know there's diameter limits too on the shoreline protection. I'm not one hundred percent sure there. The other thing is that the individual members volunteering using chainsaws. It can be done. I do have a ruling from the attorney saying it can be done, but before anybody would cut, we'd need to go over safety procedures. I cut trees and lumber a lot different than I would cut them here at town hall. There's a lot more safety equipment that is needed when you're cutting on a municipal property than you're cutting in your backyard. There is also, if you've got several guys in the woods cutting, that could present the problem because of falling trees and trees getting caught up. So before any cutting began, the volunteers who would be cutting, I would think that we would need to talk to them and at least go over what the safety protocols are. There's some paperwork that probably would need to be signed, but it's because it's volunteerism. But there would be some safety protocols that would need to be signed saying that we did go over this with you in case there was an injury. Because even though you have your own liability, it falls back on the town because it's town property.
Because it's your own town property.
Your own town property. So that would be one concern before any trees get fallen or even done. Also, because we're talking about a lot of smaller trees and the number of trees, and seeing it there, it's like, okay, yeah, I know, I drove down there today. So I'm getting my bearings saying, okay, this is, but not seeing where a stake saying, this is where we're going to, this is where we're going back. Because I even drove in from the Patterson property a couple of months ago down around the horseshoe that's up there right now to see if there was any way we could get equipment in for Mike and the organization coming through Dana Patterson, where we used to have access by the little, what they call the bowl. The four wheels go in the bowl and go in the mud bowl. So without seeing all of that and the shoreline protection, if the council wants to move this forward, I would like to at least have DPW involved in looking at this and giving their recommendations to this club as well.
To address that just a little further, as I said, we put a working paper together to try to figure out how we would approach this project. And we did think about the Patterson property. There's a berm right here and we had a thought that what, if we needed to bring heavier equipment in, we'd ask permission from them to remove the berm for the short period of time we need to access and then we would put the berm back, again, at our expense to do it. And we'd certainly work with the town in terms of any safety precautions they want us to go through or any other thing. Safety in general is one of the big things with our club and the reason being is everyone of these aircraft have a spinning propeller. And people get their fingers whacked. If a propeller for any reason should loosen off, they fly at tremendous speed. That's why when I showed you the picture, we had the pit and we had the fences and those type of things. We're extremely sensitive to safety issues, particularly when we have an event, I mentioned two events, the frozen finger event and the float fly in the fall. We have spectators that come and they want to sit on the beach near where we're flying our aircraft. And again, there's spinning propellers there, so we're extremely careful. And so addressing again the chain cutting stuff, it would be a small group of two or three people cutting. We would not take club members and just say, go at it, guys, because we're very conscious about that. We don't want anybody getting hurt.
Nancy Harrington?
I think the way I feel is I'm not against the concept, but I really, before acknowledging that I go along with this plan, I'd want DPW feedback first. Because if it in fact, if the ordinances require modification, then that has to be built into what the plan would be.
Agreed.
So I can't say I approve of this. I approve of the consideration based upon DPW's application of criteria.
An interesting thing, two years ago, there was a general cleanup of the area and they had three of those DPW dump trucks. We filled them with tires that had been disposed and it was, it was incredible. There was a couch.
There was still more there recently too.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Again, we went looking for an aircraft that went down and we're going, how the heck did they get these tires in here? Because we had cleaned that area out two years ago. Like I said, it was three dump trucks loads. It was mind boggling to see what was disposed of in that property.
And that's the one advantage is having it open. It's more visible by your people. So that's one of the things. But again, my concern is, first of all, making sure that we're following without waivers. You know, there's no reconsideration, but following what that shoreline protection criteria is and then applying that to what is available.
We've been very fortunate at the field. We do have cameras for security reasons. The field's there, we know people come down and they walk their dogs and other things, but they've been respectful of the property that we have. We've not had any major damage. There was some...
Well, if you're there a reasonable good amount of time, that alone is going to deter...
And I mean, we have our sign in front. I mean, I think there's a lot of curiosity comes down just to see what we do. We did find after Fourth of July, some fireworks debris on the runway, but it was minor. I mean, the people that were there cleaned up after themselves and it was in our trashcan. So we're amazed that the people that come down respect the property and we like to keep it that way, so.
I think it's because of the job you do. It's a nice looking place and I think that's why people respect it.
Barbara, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I think I would also add to this that when DPW is involved, that we have a very clear delineation, pole to pole, of what trees are going to be cut. Because when I look at this picture, I see a lot of trees.
Well, they are.
And it kind of, you know, I'm not a tree hugger per se, but I respect my trees. So I think I would like that a little bit more delineated so it doesn't look like we're taking out.
Again, when we take...
And again, we're looking at it from the overhead, so there's a lot of stuff that doesn't, isn't a tree that looks like a tree.
Right. And the thing of it is, when we take the trees down, you'll still see green there because there's a lot of brush and shrubs and that type of stuff that grow prolifically through that area. But it all looks, to your point, all looks green on the picture, so.
And obviously, all that grew up in thirty something years. And will all grow back again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Michael, did you want to add something?
So that notch at the bottom is...
That was my question. Go ahead.
Pretty much bittersweet. It's just a big blanket of it. There's like four trees that they'd be cutting down and they're just bittersweet towers right now. So it wouldn't really be a loss, probably be a benefit. Another thing is, I don't know if subcommittee members have some sort of protection for chainsaws? Because we have three alternate positions, so.
No. I mean, I don't think you have any particular protection, liability protection. Because you're on a subcommittee.
What does the SCLAR property, again, is it there or is it farther south?
So talk about the notch. Is that on SCLAR property or is that...
That notch is squarely on conservation property.
That's what I thought.
SCLAR starts on the other side of the road.
Yeah, I was going to say by where the river is in that area.
So you see that road? Everything on this side is town?
Everything to the right of the road is basically SCLAR.
That's what I thought.
To the river.
Other way.
It's not just...
So this is the town parcel right here. This is SCLAR right here.
Okay.
This road is the border right here.
All right.
So they'd have to go before the conservation?
For the notch.
For the notch?
I would imagine conservation commission would want to sign off on it before you cut anything there, not just the subcommittee, but the whole committee.
Yeah, it'd pretty much be a formality because all the team members went down and thought it was no problem.
I mean, formalities are nice, but let's just do them anyway.
But necessarily, we can get them on the next, beginning of the fifteenth if they want.
That'd be a good idea.
We're talking about the notch. Where's the notch to our pump station that's down there? Because we have a pump station that's...
There's a pump station up in this area up here.
Right there? So you're to the right, you're to the right of the bridge.
Here's the rail...
That's the railroad track.
That's railroad track and bridge.
So you're right of that, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, all right, so...
At the end of their runway.
Yeah, right. I'm just wondering about what we might have...
Interfering with the pump station?
Yeah, yeah. We might have running on the...
You'd have to come back across the tracks.
Yeah, that's why DPW is, would be important to weigh in a little bit.
There's actually, one of those roads that, the four wheeler roads, is right in this area and goes into the woods there. And like I said, the tracks are here, the bridge is here, and that pump station is along the road right in here.
Now, that road is an eagle bluff trail is what the conservation commission decided on. It has a sign now.
And rocks.
Yeah, rocks. But the subcommittee is talking about clearing that notch anyway because it's just bittersweet and it's spreading.
Okay, well, that's great. You guys can work together.
So it'd be nice to have the help.
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent.
The trees don't get taller in the meantime.
So I guess I'm understanding now that this, the outline you've got here is all within town property, which is all part of the field that you guys have been using for many, many years now. Okay, I guess that wasn't completely clear from the beginning. I mean, the picture you showed thirty-four years ago showed a big clear area, but I didn't know how much of that was town land.
Well, let me go back to that picture. So the roads we were talking about, here's that border road that Mike was pointing to. So our field is right here.
Right.
But all of this area on both sides of the creek, up into the Patterson, little loop, this little loop up here, is it right over here? That was just broadly open.
It was clear, but that's not all our property.
Yeah, I don't know where the town property is beginning and end, to be honest with you.
Pretty much at the tree line, I believe, at the north end.
You mean up here?
Just right, yeah, basically right around there.
Right across from that road.
Yeah, and we're saying, we're not going to go that high. We're going to go about this area here.
On halfway?
Yeah.
Because that property used to be squared off where the road is, but I believe Lenny told me that they actually gave the town, they cut diagonally across that so the town road could stay on the town property. And they gave it the corner of the Patterson property to the town.
Okay. So if you like, I do have copies of presentations, if you folks...
We have copies and our...
Oh, you did?
Becky's already included them. She's a heck of a manager. So thank you very much for that. I don't have a problem with maintaining the town property that's being used by you guys and if that means cutting down a tree occasionally, or in this case, cutting down a lot of trees to get back to where you were, I don't have a real problem with it. Moving on to SCLAR property, I think conservation needs to weigh in on that. And obviously, if you clear cut it and make it look like a bomb went off in there, that's probably not what we'd want. It's not what you show as far as your own maintenance and management of the property you're dealing with. So I'm not really concerned about that myself.
One of the things about the field, you know, there's a saying in New England, if, given the crusty icy snow cover that we get, if you can ski New England, you can ski anyplace. If you can fly our field, you can fly anyplace. This field, and I say that seriously, we've had flyers come to investigate our field and found it too intimidating because of the trees. It's just too narrow for them and they go elsewhere.
Yeah, I can believe that.
As I said before, our hobby is half the interest in doing the hobby itself. The other half is social. It's a great bunch of guys that are there and I hope our maintenance of the field reflects what, how much we appreciate being there and how much we enjoy each other's company when we're there, so.
I think, I think it does, definitely. And I, I can imagine that finding a four hundred yard radius field anywhere to be able to fly on would be extremely difficult. So you have what you have, and you need to maintain it as best you can.
Yeah. Unfortunately, if you look at some of the publications that, that serve this hobby, and you see the places out in Texas and Wyoming, I mean, they, they can see forever, you know, gee, what's up with that there.
They don't have trees.
Exactly.
If you want to live there, go ahead.
Right, right.
I've been there.
Yeah.
Moved up here from the Dallas area, but anyway.
Is there any other questions we can help you with, or?
I, I'm pretty comfortable with it. Now, with Paul's caveats, that you need to talk with the town, you need to go through whatever safety requirements, sign whatever waiver documents, because we're definitely not trying to set a precedent of telling people to go out with your chainsaw and cut trees on town property wherever you want. I mean, this is a very special, specific case for a group that does a great job of maintaining their field and, and their facilities that they're working on. And, and as far as I'm concerned, you're welcome within limits to, to continue that maintenance as necessary to be able to fly. If that means taking down some big pine trees and whatnot, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
That's me personally.
And again, based upon what the ordinances and shoreline protections stuff is.
Yeah, with all the state and, and town rules and regulations being followed, absolutely.
So what would the process be going forward? Who do we contact? What do we do?
Contact my office.
Okay.
And we'll put you in touch with who you need to talk to.
Excellent, excellent.
So just come to the town manager's office, or give Becky a call, and she'll just say, I need to talk to somebody about shoreline protection, and she'll put you right to the right person.
Very good. She's been very good to work with.
She's great to work with. Kyle and I. Do we want to have some kind of a motion to formalize that they've been here and presented this, and, and the council is okay?
I personally would like to hear feedback from DPW before we get a final decision.
Before you give it any final, okay?
Just so that I'm comfortable with the criteria.
That works.
And, and also to have a better understanding of-
What the impact is.
What the impact is versus the white box.
Okay.
As a demarcation.
I mean, I-
Is, I mean, is it really that big?
The number's going to astound you, because in my property, I've got 1.18 acres, and I've contracted to take down thirty pine trees, and it's not going to clear my property.
No.
No. I mean, so-
So it's not really the number of trees, it's what area you're talking about.
It's where the area is.
Yeah, how much, how much you're trying to clear down.
You know, you know how you mark a plot?
Yeah. Well, go by my tree, there's a bunch of trees with-
You do have a lot of trees.
Yellow, yellow ribbon around them right now.
So can Becky put us in touch with the DPW? How does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you call Becky.
Between Becky and Paul.
Yeah.
Okay.
Call Becky, I'll, tomorrow morning, I'll talk to Becky and, and let her know that you'll be calling. I just don't know which one, which person in DPW will get you to the right area you need for the shoreline, especially for shoreline protection.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's dawn, if it's-
It might end up with community development or something to try and get that kind of information.
Yeah, I don't, I, so that's, I gotta just talk to people tomorrow morning.
You gotta, gotta talk to people and figure out exactly how to direct you through that.
Let's help you, okay.
And then DPW can let us know at what time to put it back on the agenda.
Yes, and it won't take long. It won't take long to come back with a recommendation. Now that we have their plan and know what they want to do, they can look at it and apply, give a recommendation. Matter of fact, I, I could say it could go back on the eighteenth.
Okay.
And lastly, if, if you can tell me, not tonight, but if you can get me the information of why we're more stringent than New Hampshire DES, why we are, when did that come about? I'm curious on that. I don't know why we would make it more difficult for people.
I just remember when we were doing Losman Park, it was mentioned that we are a little more stringent than DES with our zones.
All right. And, and that's not for this issue necessarily, but I am curious.
But I can get you that information, too.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
I, I want to express our thanks to you people to allow us to come forward tonight. And the town has been excellent to us, and as far as the club, we really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk to you.
Can you advertise that a little bit?
Again, thank you, thank you very much.
We need a little uplifting, we'll contact you.
All right, very good.
So, so we haven't necessarily blessed your project. We've asked you to get some more information.
Understood.
And we'll review it again.
Yeah, understood.
But it, it sounds like, I'm not hearing a lot of negative.
Yeah.
As long as you follow the rules and requirements for safety and, and whatnot, and we don't send out eighteen people with chainsaws and start swinging them around our heads and stuff like that, you know. Not a good thing.
Not with this group.
Not a good look for the town of Merrimack.
Not a mask.
No masks either.
Did you want to say?
No mask?
Paul, you want to say something?
Chains.
Oh. No hockey mask.
If, if we could, to just finalize this, motion to table to November eighteenth, pending the information requested by the town council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, and seconded by Barbara, Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara, to table this discussion to the eighteenth?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes six zero zero.
Good, thank you very much.
Thanks. We look forward to hearing from you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Matt, thank you for hanging in here with us.
Good to resist. Really good.
Matt?
We're going to, just for that comment, we're going to skip to number four. Number three on our agenda, proposal to increase athletic field rental rates, submitted by Parks and Rec Director Matthew Casperis. Town council to review current fee charges to rent athletic fields in Merrimack and consider a proposal to increase those fees to bring them up to market rate.
So Matt's in front of you tonight. We've been looking at this for a couple of years now. Matt did a lot of homework on surrounding communities and what they charge. The big takeaway that I want to present to the council is that this doesn't, we do not charge a rental fee to the MYA, the Merrimack men's softball that play on Monday, Wednesday night.
And Thursday.
And Thursday, if there, if there's a rain out. We're not talking about those. What we're talking about is people come to Matt and say, I want to have the Beast of the East tournament for softball on XYZ date, and I want the lights. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about field rental. We're not talking about renting fields to the MYA or, or other organizations that we support, or the town council supports.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Matt.
So, yeah, as Paul said, this, this, a question came up last year during my budget presentation in January about our, about our field rates and what we were charging and what it made, and, and so, you know, I put together, there we go, this information last year. But our current athletic field rates have been in place since 2000, so that predate me. And, and, you know, as Paul said, most of our rentals are taken up by the MYA, by Merrimack Men's Softball, and a couple of other town-based organizations. And, and so, for anybody else, these, you know, Beast of the East tournaments, or whoever they happen to be, we have, right now, we have a flat rate fee for the entire day, you know, and so any of our fields that, that don't have lights on them, which is most of them, they pay thirty dollars for the day, and they can use it from, you know, eight in the morning until ten o'clock, well, eight o'clock at night, or for a field without lights, and a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day, and then I'll get them up until ten o'clock at night, which is primarily Martell Field, but would also technically include Bice if we ever rented that out, or the soccer field that reads Ferry, which we don't do very often. You know, right now, we generate about sixty-five hundred dollars a year from those, those rentals. Again, primarily, it's Martell and Twardowski. And that comes mostly from three groups that are there pretty much every week, all summer, all year long. It's the New Hampshire Adult Softball, Plex Softball, which is New Hampshire Sports Plex Group, and then New Hampshire Sports and Social Group, which is an adult sports league group. Beyond those three groups, and beyond the, what the MYA uses, that takes up ninety, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of our field availability anyway. And so we often get a lot more requests than what we can accommodate. As I said, those groups are primarily on Martell and Twardowski, and, and, and talking to Lori over at Highway, they have a budget of thirteen thousand dollars a year just to maintain those two fields. But, yeah, we're only bringing in sixty-five hundred dollars in rental income, so we're, we're kind of, it costs us a lot more to maintain those fields than, than we do. And MYA, and I should say that MYA does not use either of those, the, like, the softball fields at those two locations. So, so last winter, after this question came up during the, the budget presentation, you know, we sent out a survey to, to communities across the state, trying to get a sense of what, where they charge, you know, what they charge, how they charge, who they charge. And, you know, one of the, the clear things that stood out to me is, we are the only community from those surveys that charges just a flat rate for the day, didn't matter whether it was an hour or twelve hours of the day. Everybody else charges, you know, either by the hour, or a two hour, or a four hour block. And, and so, you know, I look at, you know, some of these leagues, again, they'll, they'll come in and they'll be there from dawn to dusk for a softball tournament that they might make, you know, two thousand dollars on, or, you know, whatever it happens to be. And so I feel like we're, we're shortchanging ourselves here. Across New Hampshire, there is a shortage everywhere. Everybody's looking for field, and we're no exception. And, and because we're significantly cheaper than everybody else, obviously, they come looking to us first, not that we have a lot of availability. Our fields are booked seven days a week, spring through the fall, you know, realistically, weekdays from, you know, five o'clock till dark. On weekends, it's eight AM till eight or 10 PM, depending on the, on whether the field has lights or not. And so our fields never get a chance to rest. They're, 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 they're in fair shape, but they're not in great shape, you know. One of the things, as Paul mentioned, it, you know, is, you know, we're only bringing in half of what, what it costs us actually to maintain some of these fields, and, and raising our fees do, would bring us up to kind of in line with what everybody else is charging, which will then go back towards kind of offsetting what the town's investing in to maintaining these fields. It also potentially, you know, opens up some availability for other groups that might want to get into field. So say, for example, NHU SSA softball, they have a tournament, you know, okay, it's thirty dollars for the day, and they're going to book it for the, they've got it blocked for the entire day, but maybe they only really need it for three hours or four hours. You know, potentially, you could open that up to, you know, somebody else to come in, because then they're going to be a little more cost selective on it if they don't necessarily need the hours, knowing that they're going to have to pay for the extra hours. So last winter, in January and February, you know, we brought this to the Parks and Rec Committee, we talked about it, we, we did invite those rental groups that we get to come to the meeting, we all, or, and or submit comments, and we didn't get anything from any of them. They, as I said, most of them are, are coming in on kind of weekday evenings, and then it's weekends without lights, or it's the weekend all day, kind of eight AM to 10 PM. We don't get, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the other towns in the survey were, and the, the survey results, I believe, are in your package, but a lot of the towns in the survey do hourly blocks of time, and that, we don't get people booking to come in to look for an hour or two hours. And so I liked what Salem and a couple of the others do, is where it's kind of half-day, full day, or full day plus lights, you know, to kind of break, break that fee schedule up. And so looking at those three outside groups that I mentioned at the beginning, you know, so a half-day, it's going to be a hundred dollars, you know, for half a day versus paying thirty bucks, hundred, you know, and then going, increasing, you know, exponentially based on length of the day. We, we, we've always included what we've called a Merrimack resident rate, and this was, this is really like, you know, John Smith has their kid's birthday party, and they want to rent a field to hold their kid's birthday party. We don't get a lot of them, mostly because our fields are booked up anyway, but that, that fee is, again, right now, they're paying thirty bucks, and this would go up to fifty in, in this proposal. Or, you know, one of the businesses, you know, wants to have a company softball game, or, you know, so it's a field rental of, you know, for somebody, kind of a one-time event. And, and, and again, but, you know, sticking to kind of the half-hour, full hour, you know, full day or full day with lights time block. And so, again, going back to our, our, our adult sports leagues that are using most of our rentals right now, so for example, NHU SSA softball, right now, will pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars to the day to hold, you know, Beast of the East softball tournament at Martell, and then an additional thirty-two for Twardowski, for a total of a hundred and fifty-five dollars a day. In the new pricing structure that I've proposed here, we're looking at two hundred dollars for Martell and a hundred and fifty for, for Twardowski. So they're paying basically three hundred and fifty dollars to hold this tournament with forty teams to, to, you know, you know, it, 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 it is an increase for them, and obviously, part of the reason we waited, you know, we looked at this, we kind of had this information ready back in March, but our season was already booked. So it didn't make sense to worry about it when I was worried about camp and other things at that point in time. So we're here tonight, obviously, to get ahead of it before, you know, those groups start calling me in, in February to look for, for next year. You know, so it, like I said, it does increase their fees, but then maybe they're going to be a little more selective about booking things when they know that there is a financial cost to doing that. As I said, you know, what these fee, what this fee structure does is it should generate revenues, at least covering the cost of what Public Works is paying to maintain those fields, or get us at least certainly a lot closer to it than compared to where we are now. And I think that is everything I have at this point, and so I will open it to questions.
One other thing I would like to state-
Yeah.
-is that we get the fields prepared for these tournaments on a Friday.
Yeah.
And if you got games starting at eight o'clock, they're every hour on the hour roughly, hour and ten minutes, and they're playing a number of games and using them all, they're, they're, they're putting a lot of wear on the field. It's a lot different than if you have three softball games that start at six-thirty on a, on a Monday and go to ten o'clock on a Monday night, or eleven o'clock. There's a lot more wear and tear going on to the fields, and that's the other reason why we're, we're looking at this increase. It's a bargain still. Two hundred dollars for a full day with lights? That's a bargain. So it's just something that we were looking at. We're not trying to recoup or make this a, a moneymaker for the town. We're just trying to recoup and not give these outside organizations being supplemented by tax dollars for, for the use of the fields.
Barbara?
So a question for you, Matt.
Mm-hmm.
At what point do the fields, do these organizations stop renting a field? Like, you know, it's getting dark early now. So if they've rented the field for a whole day because they're playing, you know, soccer, are they still on the fields at this time of the year?
My last, uh, field permit right now is November 13th, so next Saturday.
Okay, because what-
And they usually start, usually somewhere around April 10th or 15th.
Okay, because what I see here is from eight to 12, okay, um, for the half day. And then from six to 10, there are no lights in there and we, we're running electrical. So I think we need to add something, a, a, a cost for lights in there. Secondly, on the next one, on the full day, it's kind of the same thing. At some point, they're going to want the lights on and so we should have a fee for lights there as well. Just my thoughts.
A lot of the, a lot of the-
Full day plus lights is the next line down.
Well, this is, yeah, but that's till 10 PM.
I, I do have to say, a lot of the softball tournaments are done by, beginning of, except by Labor Day because the big national events happen in Labor Day. So a lot of these tournaments that happen on the weekends, what they do is they try to gain points to gain up their seeding in the national tournaments down in Florida. So usually a lot of the softball, which is the big user of the lights, is during the summer months, June, July, August. There's a couple of tournaments that occur that are, I don't even know if they're still doing them, but there was a couple of tournaments that occurred in October and those were more like fundraisers. Like one guy would be holding one for the Jimmy Fund and one guy was holding one for, for another tournament. Those tournaments seem to happen, I don't know what's, is this a softball tournament on the 13th?
Yep.
All right, so it's probably a fundraiser or something or the Last Gas or something like that that they, they do. So, yeah, you're right, half day, the sixth, whatever, definitely need lights added to that.
The, and the thought process, if I may, was, you know, trying to come up with a, you know, like on a weeknight, they're going to start at six o'clock, you know, for example, you know, um, if we had that, you know, and, and I think of, you know, like Tues-, um, I think it's, let me think. No, Tuesday nights is New Hampshire Sportsplex is at, one of those, is at Twardowski Field on Tuesday nights. So they're starting at six and they kind of play until dark. I called it 10, but only because on, if they were at Martell, which sometimes they are, then until 10 o'clock because that's when the lights have to go off at Martell. But realistically, it's six to dark, you know? But I didn't want to get into 15 different pricing structures based on time of year and, you know, whatnot. Again, on Saturdays and Sundays, usually when it's these tournaments, as Paul said, they're starting at eight o'clock and they just go all day long and they're either going to end at eight, you know, at kind of darkness during the summer or they're going to go until, till 10 o'clock, um, you know, when they can.
The, the other thing too is that UTRIP, UTRIP S, UTRIPS A, um, they have also put money into the field, Martell Field. The men's softball has put money in both Twardowski and Martell Field. So, um, I just wanted to bring that out, that the New Hampshire USAA, UTRIPS A, um, does put money back in to the field. They redid the scoreboard out there at Martell this year. And they've doing something with the announcers booth. So they have put money back in, but nothing like the men's league puts money back in. So, um, it's, it's to the point where they're using our fields, there's a lot of wear on our fields, we're trying to get a, a fair rate for our fields and that's what really we're looking at. And the reason why we brought it forward in November, the early November, is because like Matt says, the guy who runs UTRIPS A is Amer-, used to be a Meramec resident and he'll start booking in January his tournaments for the summer because he wants to get them published because he wants to get teams in from all over the place. And tournaments used to be a two-day tournament, they went to a one-day tournament. So they start at the crack of dawn, eight o'clock, they even start earlier than that because they'll play over at the Legion and start at seven, 7:30, some of them, to get games in, so.
Lon?
Oh, I just needed a clarifier. Barbara asked a question and I went into a different zone and don't think I heard the answer. The question was, on the half, on the six PM to 10 PM, there's not a charge for lights. What was your answer or I missed that?
Realistically, I mean, on a weekday, they're, um, there, there's only, it's realistically, it's, it's Martell Field. And so if somebody was only going to come in and do six to 10 PM, you know, versus, you know, booking the entire day, uh, you know, it, it's kind of a wash in, you know?
Okay.
Because they're only there, but that doesn't tend to happen very often. You know, you, usually it's more Saturday and Sunday, you know, when they're out there for 12, 14 hours, you know? So we kind of went to that three-tiered system.
So, so you don't envision somebody booking a half day from noon to eight PM or something like that?
No, but it wa-, I wanted to give myself the flexibility if it ever came up, you know, it's like, you could, I mean, I, I would look at it as like kind of four, eight and 12 hours. So four hours would might be six to dusk, you know, or, um, but a half day would still be kind of 12 to four or versus eight hours would be 12 to eight. You know, and maybe we use a different description and maybe we just call it four, eight and 12 hour blocks, you know, and maybe that's easier. But that's kind of how I picture it, is kind of four, four, eight and now 12 hour blocks. Barbara?
I guess the part I'm struggling with here is that even with this increase, we're still not even going to be close to breaking even. So that means the town and the residents are pick, is picking up the excess. As a business, that would not be acceptable. I would like to be at least a little bit closer, but maybe, I don't know, maybe that's not possible. You have organizations who are fixing fields and doing things, but that still isn't paying the bills and the electrical, electrical bill comes back to us. The bill for the staff to go in and maintain the properties
Right.
Come back to us. Just saying.
The-
One of the reasons why we're not covering 100% of the cost is because a significant amount of the time, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, if there's a rain out, is that that's the men's softball league that the town has way back when, when they changed it, has said, yeah, we're going to cover some of the costs and that's some of the cost for the field and that's some of the cost for the lights. Is that the town has accepted that to have a men's softball league. And I believe they came to the town before I got on way back when to present that when Mike Housman was the Parks and Rec Director, when they changed the league over. So, and, uh, it was, uh, it was back then that the town had made a commitment to the men's softball fee, league to pay for some of these expenses. It's every year, it's just like the MYA.
I think part of the thought at that time, because I kind of vaguely remember those conversations, was that there is an economic benefit when they start bringing in these tournaments and things. And if we're outpacing the area competition for field space, I guess, it, you know, they, they will divert and go elsewhere. So it's, I, I don't know if they, if it's like it used to be because I haven't paid attention to men's softball and those things, but it, uh, it used to be they'd drag in teams from all over the place and, uh, they'd be staying at hotels and, and all that. So I don't know if it, they do it that way anymore, so there maybe is no benefit.
They, they don't, they don't stay at the local hotels.
Because they're one-day tournaments.
They're one-day tournaments.
That's what they do.
They might go to a local, they might run down a mobile. They might run to, to Burger King, they might run to a sandwich shop, things of that sort during the day depending on how many games they have.
So I, it, I, I guess I'm a little concerned. I don't know how much we're covering, but if we're raising their rate from $155 a day for a group that, that rents two fields to 100 to 350 a day, that's a $195 increase. That's more than twice what they're currently paying. If they were paying enough to cover 6,500 in income and it costs us 13, then, then that more than twice amount does come awful close to covering our costs for those two fields. And if MYA and, and whatnot are using the other fields, I, you know, that's part of our, our budget and our explanation of how we maintain fields and things like that. So I'm a little, I, I, I don't know how you can more accurately say cover 100% of our costs by their use of the fields than, than something like this. And I would rather, instead of saying that we're trying to bring it up to market rates, say that we're covering our costs, um, which, which I think is what we're trying to accomplish.
But we're not.
But why not?
I said, why, but we are not.
Why are you saying we are not?
Well, because based on the information that we receive, there's deficit.
How much? I, I don't think you can come up with a number of how much because he's been receiving 6,500 a year now and he's paying 13,000. So twice that number
Yeah.
Would cover the 13,000. Well, $195 more than the
$150.
You know, more than twice what they're charging today at these rates would cover more than, would bring in more than twice the amount. So that, as far as I can tell, that covers it plus or minus a small amount.
And if I may, I should, I mentioned, I mean, we don't have any way to like bill them for, like at Martell Field, we don't have any way to say bill them for kilowatt hours of, you know, I, our, our, our time clock is old over there and there's no computerized report that I can say, okay, on June 13th, you use eight hours of electricity at, in, at this, you know, transmission rate, you know, whatever. We just don't have a system sophisticated enough to, to detail it to that level. So that's the other reason where it's kind of a, you know.
I mean, I agree that it's difficult to figure out, but I, I think we're close, at these numbers, we're really close to covering exactly our costs for at least Martell and Twardowski Fields. But I, but I'm concerned about the proposal of the six to 10 for a half a day, to do something different to try and come up with, whether you do it four, eight and 12 or whether you do
Yeah.
You know, a, a before noon or an afternoon and then an evening sub-rate or something like that.
Yeah.
Motion to table.
Okay. There's a motion to table on the floor?
Well, we just keep changing the picture. Motion to table. Feels with us, not a second, it's fine by me.
Sirs, I guess I should call for a second. Is there a second to table? It's not debatable.
Right. So what I'd like to do is make a comment before I were to second it.
So I'm guessing it's not seconded.
Okay.
Well, I'll second if a discussion then.
We can't discuss a motion to table. It's not a discussable, discussionable motion. A motion to table A motion to table, tables
Just tables.
If it gets voted in. So then you go to a vote. If, if that's what we want to do.
So it is the only motion that you cannot discuss?
Right.
Right.
So if it failed for a lack of a second, I'd like to make a comment.
Well, I'm going to say it failed for a lack of a second then.
If, but I, I don't know if, if these changes you're looking for, if Matt could put it together, I, I get the idea of what you were looking for, he wouldn't have to come back for another late night. I think if we, it was just sent to us at our next meeting, we could move on that if there's room at the next meeting.
Consent agenda or something like that or?
Yeah, because we could pull it off to discuss if we had to, but if we have an underst-, you know, consent agenda would be fine and that way he could, uh, get that taken care of
There you go.
To make-
I think that's what Lon's trying to get to.
Okay. So Nancy?
Sorry, so just one clarifying question. If there's going to be a rental in the evening hours at six PM to 10 PM
No.
Or whatever.
We didn't.
There would be no charge for lights? Even though they might have to use lights?
If they're not using lights, there's no charge for lights. If they are using lights, there's a charge for lights.
Okay, so there would be, okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
If you can clarify some of those things and send it back to us. I think we're generally acceptable to what you're proposing and, and then we will take it up as a consent agenda item whenever you bring it back.
Okay. So we have
Is that okay?
Just send it for consent agenda?
Okay.
With modifications, suggested modifications? Second?
Sure. Is that an emotion you made?
Yes.
And finally just seconded?
Well, Nancy did, but I-
Nancy did. So a motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Nancy, to Nancy Murphy. Nancy squared. To, uh, to move this to the consent agenda at our next meeting
With-
With adjustments per our discussion tonight.
Yep.
As requested.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That Lon Woods is in opposition, that passes 5-1-0 to move it to consent agenda after adjustments. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Mr. Chairman?
We have no minutes, yes?
Okay, I was, uh, I think the desire of, of Dr. Woods, I'm moving that we continue where the time is at 10 o'clock, we move, continue with the budget, uh, agenda because it's got one other item plus.
Second.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, I think we do.
That's a motion to continue. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The 2022, 2023 budget schedule submitted by Town Manager Paul McCall, the Town Council to review the 2022, 20-
Now, this is where it starts getting busy, Nancy. I'd say that if Andy were sitting here.
What?
It's been, the criteria has been so light, the schedule, that I keep on saying to Nancy and Andy, just wait.
Just wait, January is coming.
Nancy, the heads up, here it is.
So, thank you. So at the last meeting, uh, we kind of went over the schedule, um, but I brought it forward in front of the Town Council tonight so that it's, you actually see it on paper. The big thing is that, um, there, there are a couple of little modifications. I got back today from the legal counsel, some of the dates, they changed a little bit, but everything else is basically the same. One date that changed was posting of a public hearing on the charter amendments. They put the 29th of December instead of the 30th. The budget schedule will be January 6th, um, January 12th, um, and January 19th would be the three dates that we've normally done for it. Those are tentative departments. Tossing a lot of things in the air, um, since we just brought in a new fire chief, I don't know if I want to make him be the first one to go. So I'm thinking of switching him in police. Matt Casparis generously offered to also come on the 6th because of other commitments that are happening. So some, you'll get a schedule with the budget of when we be discussing departments, but those are the dates that we'll be discussing department issues and department budgets. Basically, I don't know if there is, uh, any, any charter amendments that the Town Council would like to see moving forward. If there are, it would be nice to, uh, to at least get some of the, the framework started so that we can hit the ground running in December with it. Because as you know, later on this month, Jesus, November, later on this month is Thanksgiving and then we get into the holiday season and seems like days fly by and weeks fly by at that time. So if, if there's anything that the council is thinking about, any council is thinking about making a charter amendment, if you could let my office know, we'll start working on getting the proper language. Because of the tight time, time schedule with holding meetings and getting it up to the state for review and sending it to the people that we need to do. February, things lighting up with the budget, we just have the budget hearing and that'll be on February 10th, um, to, to discuss the budget. The one comment I do want to make is that every year, it seems that because of the way group petitions come in, there's a difference between a petition warrant article and a petition warrant article is a money article. Those are what goes on the warrant and the ballot we vote in April. It's a money petition warrant article. For instance, that would be if somebody came in and said, I would like three people in Parks and Rec at a cost of $200,000. Add three positions for 200, that is a petition warrant article that would go on, that is due by February 8th, that would go on the ballot. If it's a petition article for an exemption, such as when we did solar, that's a group petition, that even though it's money tied to it, there isn't a direct correlation in the budget or the appropriation. So that would be a group petition and those, the council has 60, once they receive them, has 60 days to hold a public hearing. But we've always pushed that through because of the timing with the ballot. So if somebody is looking to do a group petition such as a solar exemption or some other kind of exemption, we would need them earlier in mid-January to be able to have time for the council to properly announce it, post it and have discussion with it. So tho- that's a little bit, and the, like I said, the word petition warrant article is getting confused because of the way our charter spells out what is supposed to go on a petition warrant article for the budget purpose. The way the charter was written, it's only money articles get voted on by the residents, the ballot. But if people want to bring in exemptions, the Town Council's always said, let the people, let me know if they want it, the taxpayer. And that's fine, it's just those need to come in sooner in the middle of January than... And if anybody has questions about what is a petition warrant article for money or what's a petition article for 50 people signing off on it, call my office, I'll be more than happy to discuss that with them, so. happy to discuss that with them, so.
All right, I can find out later.
Okay. And then, we're looking at March 9th for our deliberative session, which is always the second, between the Tuesday of March and the following Saturday. So, it's, we always do it on the Wednesday, and Wednesday is March 9th. And then, if it snows, it'll be March 11th. Our ballot vote will be April 12th, and that's when the polls and the ballot. So, those are the highlights that are here. File, oh, the other one, the other big one that people always ask about is filing period for candidates running for town office. That is between February 23rd and March 4th. So, it's the last Wednesday of February to the first Friday of March. So, that would be from February 23rd to March 4th. Are there any questions on the budget schedule that I can clarify?
Does the schedule be on our thumb drive?
Everything will be on your thumb drive, once it's finalized, when you get your budgets, it'll be posted on the web like it's always been, it'll be on the front page of the web, our website, and each Town Council will know, and we'll stick to that schedule when we do our budget hearings in January.
And we receive the budgets December 16th?
That is correct.
Which is our second meeting of that month.
That is correct.
And our first budget meeting is the 6th?
The 6th.
Any other questions or comments? Is this okay with everybody? Andy's not here, so he's okay with it?
It's a hazard not to be-
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. That brings us to minutes, which we haven't got today, because our last meeting was only a week ago. Comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council. Nancy?
Thanks. I feel like this is my weekly reminder, because we're running out of time. I just wanted to remind people about the Wreaths Across America. We are looking to sponsor 550 wreaths, and we're not even halfway there, we're getting close, but not quite. And these wreaths will be placed on veterans' graves at Last Rest Cemetery on December 18th. There's certainly an online place, people can go to wreathsacrossamerica.org and go to Last Rest Cemetery, or contact Jennifer DeFelice, or look on social media, it's sort of every place. So, anybody that's willing to help, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Barbara?
Just a quick update regarding Veterans Day, which is Thursday, November 11th. There will be a ceremony at the Last Rest Cemetery at 11:00 AM, and followed by a ceremony for the Remembrance Wall at the VFW on Daniel Webster Highway.
What time was it?
11:00 for Last Rest.
At what time?
11:00.
At 11:00 on 11th?
Yep.
Okay. That's when we're supposed to ring the bells?
Yep.
Okay.
That, too.
Anybody else? Paul, can you remind us, the town birthday party is the 6th at 5:00 to 6:30?
5:00 to 6:30, there'll be a band playing. At 6:30, there'll be fireworks during the day. There'll be events and games from 2:00 to 5:00 for the children and people of Merrimack to come down, and there'll be booths and things. So, basically, 2:00 till dusk, and fireworks will follow.
And then, November 7th is the Matthew Thornton Memorial?
Correct, at 1:00 PM.
At 1:00 PM. Okay. Any other comments from the council? Saying none?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Lon Woods, seconded by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. Thank you, Merrimack, and good night.